Good evening, everyone. The City of Norco City Council's regular meeting agenda for Wednesday, April 18th. Call to order and the roll call, please.
Councilmembers Newton.
Here.
Hannah.
There.
Bash. Mayor Protem Grunmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman.
Yes.
All present.
Are there any speaker cards for closed session?
No cards.
We'll recess, close session, tap cam once, and we'll go to consider the following matters in closed session. Reconvene into public session, 7:00. Report of actions taken in closed session by the city attorney.
The City Council in closed session considered the matters that are listed on the agenda, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you. Please stand for the flag's allegiance by Mayor Protem Robin Grunmeyer.
Gentlemen, please join me in a spark flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please for me, oh, I don't see Dick Killery, is he here? Jeff, can you help us out here on an invocation? Thank you. Oh, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's indeed an honor and a privilege to fill in. Heavenly Father, we just come before you this evening to thank you for who you are, that you would bless this community, that you would bless our city with such great residents and council and staff, that we would have a meeting tonight that would honor you in our discussions, in our decisions, the things that we cover to benefit everyone specifically. Just help us to be a great community. We ask that you would continue to watch over us and protect us. Thank you for our veterans. Thank you for just everything you've blessed us with in this town. Help us have a great meeting tonight. Thank you for these leaders and the positions that they're in to have to make these decisions to help guide our city. Watch over us, protect us. Thank you for all your blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, we have a business appreciation, and I see, there he is, Scott.
Well, as the mayor's making his way down to the podium here, if I can invite Richard Rivera, the store manager of Floor &amp; Decor, and his wife, Toni, up to the front here. Just going center over there. Thank you. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Scott DeRosa, and I'm a member of the Economic Development Advisory Council here in the City of Norco. And on behalf of the City Council, I'm here to present the Business Appreciation Initiative plaque to Floor &amp; Decor. Floor &amp; Decor has been in Norco for about 11 years and has about 84 stores nationwide. Because of their location here, they have created jobs for our community, generated sales tax revenue for the City of Norco, and we've all benefited from that. And because of their business philosophy, they've experienced a rapid expansion throughout California. Their business philosophy reads, "Floor &amp; Decor gives customers a great shopping experience by offering a large in-stock selection of tile, wood, stone, and related tools and flooring accessories at unbelievably low prices." So it's my pleasure to present to Floor &amp; Decor the Business Appreciation Initiative plaque that reads, "The City of Norco hereby honors Floor &amp; Decor, whose rapid expansion throughout California began in Norco, where the company has created jobs and generated sales tax revenue while assisting Norconians in the enhancement of their home value." Thank you very much. And if you don't mind.
So he pretty much said everything that I was gonna say, so. But the associates at the store really appreciate this honor. When I told them that I was coming over here to receive an award on their behalf, they were very excited. We are very busy at the store. We are still hiring. If you have anybody that wants a job, send them down over there. But very happy, we live in Corona. My wife actually works right across at the Norco Unified School District. But again, very excited for this honor. Really appreciate it. The executives at my company are very excited as well. So, thank you.
He called that South Corona.
Take a picture in front of the podium.
Right over here.
Try not to get on the other side of you.
All right, well, I see Scott in here, and come on up here, Scott. This is a certificate of recognition. The City of Norco hereby recognizes the Norco Little League 60 years. Their 60-year anniversary and a strong commitment to enduring partnerships with the Norco community. You know, one of the Norco Little League alumni is sitting up there behind us, a big guy right there in the blue shirt. Kevin, you ought to be down here. You play the Little League in this town. Come on here. We won't say that you're one of the first teams before there was dirt and that they used those great big bags and things like that, but the third team. So, Scott, on behalf of the city, we want to thank you very much, and you recognize all the things that Little League has done in this town. There have been a lot of people that played this sport, baseball, in town that have gone on to bigger and better things, either at the high school level, college level, and a few in the pro level. So it's been exciting to see this happen over 60 years. So, Kevin, you have anything to say?
No, I was on the Mounties. We were the second team to win a championship after we moved to Norco entirely. And Little League, I have some really, really great memories. My dad was president of the league for nine years, something crazy like that. So congratulations, way to go. And you got the date right, very good.
Of course, not to forget Councilman Grunmeyer with two currently, were your boys?
They're at the field right now.
They're at the field right now.
The one's actually playing.
And the other one's umpire. So we have, so Little League has always been a part of this community, so we thank you. So Scott, anything you say?
Sure. So I just want to say I appreciate this award, you know, because I really love Norco Little League. I actually just love Norco. I've been here forever. So this is my first year as taking over and being the president. The last four years, I was actually the chief umpire. So I just, I really love this. And so just something I want to tell you guys, so right now, currently, this week, we do this fun little pickup tournament for just the junior divisions. It's with Eastvale, Harupa, all the Corona teams. And what we do is, so this started a couple of years ago, it's to break up the nostalgia of the everyday playing. So right now, what the teams do is they can only swing with the wood bat, and they get in the box with two balls and two strikes already on them. It's something just to kind of break up that everyday nostalgia, and what it does is, the following week, you'll see these teams go out there and they're really swinging the bats, you know. So actually, so we have 27 games through Saturday to this Saturday, and Norco is actually hosting 14 of them for District 72, because they love our fields. And I don't know if you've ever been there, but we have got the best snack bar around. We really do. So if you guys are interested, this Saturday, we have a game at 10, 2, and 4:00, and 4:00 is actually the championship game. So last Saturday, we had, just at Norco Little League, we had 17 games being played at Norco Little League. So, and the thing is great, I mean, just the revenue, I mean, it generated $2,500 just for the snack bar, which all goes back in the league. And so another thing that we started a couple of years ago, I hope I'm not taking up too much time, but we, so we started, instead of selling candies and stuff like that, we started bringing on this thing called the Hit-a-thon. And all the kids raised money, and so we actually did that this Sunday. So the kids all raised money, and we put it back into the league. And so what we're doing is, on Field 3, we, so last year, we raised all kinds of money, and we're putting shade covers over the bleachers. And so this year's money will now go to Field 2, and we're putting shade covers over those bleachers. And so hopefully next year, we can do the same to Field 1. So, and another thing is, each field is color-coded, and so all the colors that are, or the covers that go on each field are going to be color-coded to match each field. And so, those are the things I just kind of wanted to tell you, you know, if you guys ever are interested, just come out and watch some ballgames. Norco Little League is very great. It's a great league to be part of. So I appreciate this honor, and this is great.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a question for the president.
What's that?
So, I have a question. So, what do you mean, you, of course you use wood bats, what else would you use?
Well, back then, all you could use, now we got composites and metals, you know.
I know, I just.
And the thing that's kind of a killer is, you know, last year, I think it's a conspiracy, now they changed the bats and made everybody have to now go out and buy all these brand-new bats, and it's just.
Well, we played with a rock wrapped in a goat bladder.
Right, I bet you did. I bet you did. And your glove was probably milk carton or something.
And our next proclamation, and I don't know if someone from mental health is here. Very good. Hi, I think I saw you on Monday in Corona. Come on over on this side. Come on over on this.
I'm all over the place.
I had the privilege of going to the brand-new grand opening of the Riverside Union Medical in South Corona.
Oh, okay.
At there, the brand-new facility. It's close, and it's actually, the new facility up there is designed to help low-income and people without insurances and medical insurance and that, to help them on their medical and mental health needs up there. And they have, for those who don't know, the county has jumped on this, and they're building 11 throughout the county. The next one will be in Harupa Valley. So we gotta talk to our supervisors, the new ones, when they come in board, and try to get one here in town.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we're gonna work on this.
Okay.
All right. So this proclamation, and I'm not gonna put all the whereas and wherefor's, but a proclamation of persons' mental health is considered to be an integral part of the overall health and wellness, and one in five adults experiences a mental health condition in any given year, and one in 25 adults live with mental illness, such as major depression, bipolar disorder, or schizophrenia. And approximately one-half of all chronic mental illness begins by the age of 14, and three-quarters begins by the age 24. Whereas there's long delays, sometimes decades, often occur between the onset of symptoms and when individuals get help. And early identification and treatment can make a difference in successful management of mental illness and long-term recovery. It is important for everyone to learn the symptoms of mental illness in order to get help, and when needed, and support others in accessing care. And every person in the community can make a difference in helping end the silence and stigma that for too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting help. Public education, severe activities can encourage mental health, promote wellness and recovery of those with mental health conditions, and improve the lives of individuals and families affected. And so on behalf of the City Council, we do hereby claim the month of May of this year as Mental Health Month. Thank you very much for all you guys do. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
So, on behalf of Riverside University Health Systems, I'd like to thank the City of Norco for the proclamation and for the support of more awareness in regards to mental health and reducing the stigma, and invite all of you out on May 24th at Fairmont Park. We will be having an event there, outreach event, free hot dogs, entertainment, have a lot of fun, a lot of information from 1 to 5 out there. So, thank you again, everyone. Thank you.
She's gonna run. By the way, there's really not, uh, sort of innovations in there, so. Well, I am told that Administrative Professionals Day coming up soon, and so the city wants to recognize members of our own staff for their hard work. And I have three of them, four of them, no, three, in the room right now. Ms. Newton, come on up. Ms. Hauser. Ms. Link, come on. Did I miss anybody from the audience here? No. Okay. And other employees that are recognized would be Michelle Anglin from Park &amp; Recs, Hank Coat, Frank Scaglione, I'm gonna butcher his name, Frank Scaglione, Robin Shepherd, Patty Ireland, and Alejandra Gonzalez, who by the way, did a very good job over at the Senior Center on that day. Just excellent. I just met her the other day. But, the city, and I won't do the whereas, we proclaim since 1952, administrative professionals has been officially recognized and celebrated and is one of the largest workplace observances in the U.S. Today's administrative professionals must take charge of their own career development and be fully aware that the necessary skills remain key contributors to employers are constantly changing. In addition to shaping the future of their individual careers, today, career-minded administrative professionals also shape the future of their profession by leading by example, by taking pride in their work, and by their profession, and by approaching all projects with a high level of integrity and professionalism. Because of their discipline and organizational skills, administrative professionals can contribute to the overall efficiency and effectiveness of any office environment. Administrative professionals are valued, and their contribution to the overall operation of the city is immeasurable. And the City of Norco has pledged to serve the public with the highest ethical standards by maintaining an organization that expresses such vital qualities as integrity, professionalism, sensitivity, cooperation, vitality, and recognizes the courage and encourages these traits in its administrative professionals. And by that, on behalf of the City Council, we do proclaim April 25th as Professional Administrative Professional Day. And big heart to me, thank you very much. I tease them, because when I go in there, I tell them I'm gonna get them hats that all say WIC on them, which is Woman in Charge, because they run the city, guarantee that. But for that, I want to thank you, the proclamation, you, Julie. Thank you very much. And Cheryl, thank you very much. Anyone want to say anything? Come on, you guys are an awesome words. Come on. No? All right. Who's gonna take the picture? Oh. Come on, this is, they work for us. Come on. Well, have everybody else get in here. Step back on this one. Well, with that, going right into it, the Norco Newsroom and the city's new digital communication campaign.
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm here to introduce the City of Norco's new digital communication campaign, the Norco Newsroom. This new digital service serves as the only source for official city news and will allow the city to better connect with Norco residents, neighbors, visitors, and even fellow employees. All Norco residents are encouraged to subscribe to the Norco Newsroom in order to receive top stories, meeting notices, event information, and community alerts. It's very easy to sign up, and I'm going to briefly run through the process with you. So first, users can visit the city website, where there are a variety of access points to the Norco Newsroom. Next, they should scroll and click the Subscribe link on the Newsroom homepage. A new page will load in which users are required to fill out all of the text fields that you see here, which include first and last name, phone number, and email address. Finally, users have the ability to receive information from specific email lists. These include top stories, call to order, as well as community alerts and information. The city highly encourages users to subscribe to all three lists so that they don't miss out on any important information. To finalize the process, click Subscribe to the Norco Newsroom and follow any subsequent instructions. So if you've already subscribed, you should have received two emails since the initial launch of the campaign last Thursday, and I'm going to give you a preview of those emails now. Every Tuesday, the city will send out an e-newsletter entitled Top Stories from the Norco Newsroom. The content in this email is fairly similar to the former weekly highlights, however, as you can see, the format is much different. Top Stories spotlights the main news bites that are shaping the City of Norco during each specific week. Users are given the opportunity to read a short introduction to each story, and if they are interested in more information, the user can click on any of the images, which will redirect them to the full story on the city's website. Top Stories also gives users access to learn more about their community with links to the city calendar, job postings, as well as the Norco app, among a few other features. In addition, every Thursday, the city will send out its guide to upcoming public meetings entitled Call to Order. In the past, each council and commission agenda was sent separately. With this new format, users will receive agenda postings and a chronological schedule of upcoming meetings in one comprehensive email. If they are interested in more information about a specific meeting, the user can click on an image which redirects them to the associated page on the city's website. The email also informs users when upcoming agendas will be posted, and it gives users access to learn more about their local government by contacting City Council and watching past council meeting videos. In the future, we do plan to add actions taken by the City Council, as well as video segments spotlighting council members and staff members. So finally, users can expect to receive emails regarding various alerts and community information. These will include construction alerts, road closure alerts, public safety alerts, community event announcements, and press releases. This information will be sent out as needed and will be reinforced in the Top Stories e-newsletter each week. In case users want to look back at a previous news story or email, we have archived the information on the city's website. By heading back to the Norco Newsroom homepage, users can view all published city news by clicking News Stories, while they can also view older emails by clicking Past Issues. All information sent from the Norco Newsroom will also be shared across the city's official social media platforms with this distinct branding, which was implemented to ensure readers that the information came directly from the City of Norco, as opposed to a secondary unofficial source of city information. The branding simply guarantees the accuracy and credibility of the information and reinforces the fact that the information is an actual official statement from the City of Norco. The city encourages all Norco residents to not only subscribe to the Norco Newsroom, but to also like the official City of Norco Facebook page, follow the official City of Norco Twitter page, download the Norco app, and opt-in for city text messages by texting the word Norco to 888-777, as you can see here. The city's official social media platforms are also included at the bottom of all communications sent from the Norco Newsroom. So if anyone has any questions or runs into challenges signing up, they're more than welcome to email this email address, newsroom@ci.norco.ca.us. And residents may also ask questions at the city's community outreach booth this weekend. We will be at Horse Week Friday, Saturday, and Sunday for the three-day rodeo, and we will have plenty of information on all of our digital communication platforms, including this newest addition, the Norco Newsroom. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kelly, one of the things, because I didn't know that, so if you had an existing account?
Yes.
It carried through, so you, so those that had previously signed up for the whole system are now automatically in the new system?
Correct. So if you received the email without having to go through the process that I just showed you, then you were grandfathered in, and you're automatically signed up, and you don't need to do anything further.
I wear that title well, thank you.
No pun intended.
All right. All right. Greg, anything?
First of all, I'd like to compliment Andy and all your staff for achieving one of the major goals in our strategic plan, and basically that's reaching out and communicating with our residents. And Kelly, good job.
Thank you.
Kevin?
I can remember Andy and I going, I don't know, what was it, a League of Cities meeting? And I said, "Andy, I want that, and I want that, and I want that." He goes, "We're working on it, we're working on it, we're working on it." It's fantastic, I love it. It's, it is really a huge step for the City of Norco, and you've done a fantastic job, and whoever was involved in it is just amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Berwin?
I'd like to echo what the other council members have said. I know when I started, communication with the residents was not one of our stronger points, and I think staff has done an amazing job and taken huge steps to improve that. And I know a lot of thought has been put into the look to make it very user-friendly, and I appreciate that as well. So, good job.
Thank you.
Berwin?
Good job there. And I liked the part where a resident can text that each other and let them know what the problem is on it. But, like I said, good job. Thank you.
And I'm gonna keep the sentiment going. Very good job. Andy, does she have editor-in-chief now on her title?
We're working on it.
We're working on it, okay. It has been a long coming for this city to do digital communications, and I think this is a step in the right direction, and I'm glad we're following the 2016 strategic plan of getting the residency information in a timely manner, which had been lacking prior to that. So, we're doing, the staff are doing a good job, and Kelly, and I know Matt has been part of this with the IT group and the whole staff. Thank you guys very much, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along. City Council Communication Reports on Regional Boards and Commissions. Berwin, I'm gonna start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Got quite a bit of stuff to report tonight. First off, I went up Saturday and assisted directing traffic where people could unload their trash that they brought in. It was a big, successful day. A lot of people brought a lot of junk in, and I thanked a lot of them for not sending it out on the horse trail, bringing it down there instead. But also, Monday, I attended a little celebration of the Rose Eldridge Day down here at the Senior Center. That was very nice. And then that night, I had the Ag Advisory Committee meeting. That's always an interesting meeting. We get to listen to what the students in Ag are doing and what their plans are, and sometime we get to put our input in on what might help them in the way of getting equipment and things. And I gotta tell you, this lady sitting next to me and her sister and the other staff up there, they do a wonderful job, and it's no wonder they're one of the top ag departments in the state of California. I really appreciate everything they've done, and I think, I've been on your committee about, what, 12 or 15 years? Long time. It's come a long ways. There's a lot of parents on there, and a lot of parents have had kids that have already graduated that have stayed on the committee, so it's a good deal. We get to go work on it. With RTA this month, some of the ridership has been down for the last month on some of the routes, and so they're rescheduling the timeline on them, like with the bus that comes through Norco now, Route Number 3, is, they're gonna change the service frequency on Saturday and Sunday, and instead of coming every 60-minute, it's gonna start coming around every 105 minutes, because there's such a low ridership at the present. They think when the Costco over there opens up over in Eastvale, that the ridership will come back up on that particular route. But Saturday, in the parade, RTA will have their trolley in the parade again this year, and if anybody wants to ride on the trolley, it's free. Just go down there to the staging area and hop on. I think Kevin rode on it last year, did you not? Well, that'll be your job. We're just, I'm just inviting them. But it'll be a good deal if you want to ride in the parade. And RCTC and RTA both. But Saturday, in the parade, RTA will have their trolley in the parade again this year, and if anybody wants to ride on the trolley, it's free, just go down there to the staging area and hop on. I think Kevin rode on it last year, did you not? Well, that'll be your job, I'm just inviting them. But it'll be a good deal if you wanna ride in the parade. And RCTC and RTA both commissions have voted to support that Resolution Number 69 that will protect the money from SB 1. That way, if that stays in effect, this new deal goes into effect, then the governor and his crew can't take the money and reroute it to something else besides the roads. So we voted to, both the commissions, to support that, and it was unanimous. Another thing RCTC does is takes part of the Measure A money and helps nonprofits and cities with their seniors and veterans and their kids groups. And last Wednesday, we approved money for about 12 cities and groups, and a lot of kids groups involved, and one of them was Norco. We're gonna get $281,000 for three years, and I'll read what it goes for. It's called "Seniors on the Move." The City of Norco Senior Shuttle Service was recommended for an award of funding from Riverside County Transportation Commission for specialized transportation for the physical year 2018 through 2021. This award will consist of capital equipment, new bus, as well as operating expenses. The funding received from RCTC is fundamental in meeting the mission of the City of Norco Parks, Recreation, and Community Service Department, which is to create community through people, parks, trails, programs, in a safe, professional, ethical, and cost-effective manner. This service provides seniors, those with disabilities, and veterans transportation services that are vital to increase their quality of life and maintain their independence. Many of the frail and elderly who are on strict fixed incomes rely on this no-cost, specialized, door-to-door service which Dollar Ride and RTA buses do not provide. The service provides transportation to non-emergency medical appointments, local banking, necessity grocery shopping, legal appointments, and other medical resources. The program strengthens the safety and security of those that serve and strives to foster the development of the older adult. In addition, this service delivers many opportunities for seniors, veterans, and those with disabilities recreational experiences through excursion options to local museums, theaters, community events, and to the veterans memorial when they may not have alternative transportation, therefore increasing cultural unity and quality of life, all while creating lasting memories. Staff will be working with Norco College to strengthen that relationship and aid in veterans' transportation needs. And for those that don't realize it, Dollar Ride offers this to an extent, but it costs a person, but Dollar Ride, with all the construction in the area, on the roads, and through the cities, cut through traffic in the city, Dollar Ride is having a tough time making, picking these people up and getting them to their appointments on time. So with Norco having its own little bus, and we got one donated two years ago from RTA, it's an extra bus, we have two of them, it really helps us move our seniors and our veterans around. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Burwyn. Robin?
Just a couple of things, Saturday was busy, was able to do the 5K and support the scholarship fund around the run around the lake, and then made it over to Senior Breakfast, and then went and helped unload trash at the community cleanup, so that was a busy day, good day. Unload will be meeting on Monday the 30th, so if anybody's interested in attending the Unload meeting, we're always looking for new faces at that meeting. We meet at 5:00 in City Hall for that, and Unload is United Norconians for a Life Over Drugs and Alcohol. So we're looking for ways to engage our youth so that they have options other than substance abuse. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Kevin?
I went to quite a few things, actually, but I'm only gonna list a couple of them. First off, I want to compliment the mayor and Jeff Cahann for the George Ingalls event. I couldn't attend the FFA, I belong to that group, and I'm sorry, Robin. But anyway, the event was really fantastic, you did a great job, kudos to both of you and to everybody that'll plan it. That Sunday, I'd taken a group of Cub Scouts there, which I guess you were a member of that troop, or that pack? Was it somebody? Anyway, they had a great time, and they really got it, and that was nice. Coming up on Memorial Day, we actually have, by the way, Brian, kudos to you and kudos to Robin, because we didn't think we could get it done, we suddenly discovered another Vietnam veteran who didn't recently pass away, but died from exposure to Agent Orange, and Brian and Robin were able to get it to the engraver to make it happen. So we'll actually be putting two honorees on the Wall of Honor, two Vietnam veterans who recently passed away because of exposure to Agent Orange. I didn't think it was gonna get done, but Brian pulled it off, and Robin pulled it off, and I really appreciate it. And the family, when I called the daughter this morning, she broke into tears, and it's very important to her that the wife gets to see this, so it's really cool. Thursday is dinner with the president, I hope people get there, and Kiwanis Run, thank you, Robin, you and your sister for supporting, that was really nice. I went to the 100-day anniversary of March Air Force Base, which was amazing, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me do that, that was really a lot of fun. And just so you know, if you're interested, the chancellor, this is unprecedented, but the chancellor of the Riverside City College District actually, once a week, sets up office with office hours for anybody who wants to meet him at the Norco College. Normally, there's sort of this Norco College and Riverside College butting of heads, but this new chancellor is amazing, and with the new president, and I'm really impressed with the stuff they're doing over there. But if you want to meet a chancellor, you just call the president's office and say, "Hey, I wanna come and appointment and meet with the guy." Very accessible, very sharp, very smart, so I would recommend you do that opportunity. And then we all do a bunch of other things, and I won't go into those. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Greg?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Last Thursday, I attended the Chino de Salter Authority Board Meeting, and a couple little notes, we spent a lot of time on financials, and we carry a reserve balance of approximately $6.6 million, and that we have a small shortage in our reserve balance of $318,000. So as a member agency, our share is gonna be about $12,900 that we're gonna have to contribute, approximately 4% of that. So, like I said, we spend a lot of time on the financial aspects, but I did want to give you a little rundown on our project status, as where we are today. We have approximately $152 million in water projects going on at this time. Thirteen of these projects have been substantially completed. We have two projects in construction at this time, and then one project in design, and that project in design is our Santa Ana River Crossing. Right now, we've, as I reported back, I think in November, we completed the test boring, and we're able to get underneath the river and all the way across, and we will start bidding this project in May of this year, and we're looking at anticipating construction to start January of 2019. So maybe in about another year, we'll get it, we'll eventually get there. That's all I have.
Did you get your microtunnel? Did they get the microtunneler out there yet? So that's still an option, we're gonna find out, some metal finders are gonna find out a year, 100 years from now?
There's a, you wonder why our reserve is short, there's a quarter of a million-dollar microtunneler, 25 feet underneath the Santa Ana River bottom, that you're welcome to go get, and it's yours. So that's all I have, thank you.
Well, I'm like Kevin and the rest of the council, we've been very busy this week, but I would, we were greatly honored last Wednesday night by attending the Riverside Sheriff's Department Award Ceremony, and I would like to stand up and allow my council members, and for back there, Darrell Robertson is the 2018 Deputy of the Year for Riverside County. Darrell?
Thank you. You know, two years in a row, our little city has had the distinguished honor of having the Deputy of the Year come out of our station, and Sergeant Parker and the rest of the crew, and Lieutenant Berdick, thank you. You guys work hard, and I don't think there's anybody in the city that doesn't know how much dedication you guys spend trying to keep the law enforcement and the crime down in this city, and thank you guys very much. Like the rest of us, very busy, and I'm, my sentiments also with the George Ingalls Day, Jeff, you did an excellent job on that, thank you for putting that together with the scouts. You got Larry sitting back there from the committee, the Veterans Committee, is that it? Nobody else? And Kevin? All right. But the excellent job back there as a team, we put this thing together, and it was an honor to have Jim Pixley, who went to school with George, do the presentation and speaking there, so we really honored to have that, and we want to keep him in our memory forever for what he's done. Also, that night, we dedicated the USA sign up there in honor of the Reese family. Ray passed away, unfortunately, wasn't able to see it, but that was his goal, to have that USA sign light brightly over the city, and when you go up and see it, it's unique. We're a very proud town, we're a very good veteran town. So, and like I said earlier, I was at the river breaking for the new health facility in Corona on Monday. It's unique what the board of supervisors have done in that their dedication to bringing health care throughout the county, and like I said earlier, there's 11 facilities. They know there's a problem for any of you who ever got to go into the old Riverside General Hospital on Magnolia, or the ETS ward there right by the old juvenile hall. Those things are something out of the 40s, okay? That's a facility up there we can be proud of, and as they continue to build these new ones, that we'll see more and more better mental health and medical care for the residents here in Riverside County. The Trash Day, and Chad, your substitute didn't wear his hat, but I know he worked hard. From what I understand, I don't know if you're gonna report, 240 vehicles went through that morning, and I want to give a special thanks to your staff, along with the folks from Waste Management, they, two and a half, 40 yarders full of mattresses and box springs, and another two worth of couches, so hopefully we won't see them on the trails. But along with parking rec staff to help out, and Brian, thank you for helping us out with the Sheriff's Labor Program guys, they helped out quite a bit. Special thanks to the U-Turn Group out of Chino that Glenda brought over, along with the LDS church people. Those kids worked hard, everyone worked hard, and like I said, 240 vehicles, they did in four hours, that's a lot of trash to pick up, along with the other kids that came in. Robin brings her boys, we appreciate that. Finally, the Senior Center, it was Rose Eldridge's birthday on Monday, and that's the namesake of the Senior Center, and it's very touching to hear the stories of people that knew Rose before she passed, and Michelle, one of your employees, Andy, she has a special place in her heart for Rose, and for those who know Rose, it was like having a grandma, and that's just it. So very important to everybody up there, and I think that they will continue to remind her, every time we drive by, that's the legacy of Rose Eldridge is in the community center. And with that, I will, my next meeting is, I'm going to Riqua tomorrow, right, Chad? We get to hear about the other part of the water that comes out of our sewer lines, and then have a League of Cities meeting on Friday with all the mayors, and we'll hash out what's good and bad in Riverside County. And the thing about the less we forget wall that Kevin mentioned earlier, and the good job that was done, I hate to see names go on that wall because that means that a fellow veteran passed away, but at the same time, we honor those people, and that's what's unique about this town and the Veterans Center, is we remember those who paid the ultimate sacrifice. He may not have done it in battle, but I have a brother who has the Agent Orange, and he was over there too, and it is, it does take a toll on the family members. So just remember when you go up that wall, that every one of those people on that less we forget wall contributed to your freedom and why we're sitting here today. All right, moving right along, the city council consent items. Any items to be pulled?
Mayor, I'd like to pull Item F and G.
Item D, please.
D?
Yes, please.
Any other items?
Mayor, I have a speaker card for Item 2A, the minutes.
Yep. Do I have a second? Have a first and a second? Okay. We'll hear Item 2A first, speaker card?
Yes, Harvey Sullivan.
Good evening, Harvey.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Under the minutes, under 2A, I want to speak a little bit on Item Number 3, 2A. And my question is to John Harper, the city attorney. When a code violation is written up by our code enforcement officer, then we have to give the people an opportunity to correct it, is that correct?
It's a huge...
So we have to give them an opportunity to correct it, so the first step of correction is to go to the planning commission, supply them with the plans, pay their fees, and then go before the planning commission and have them condition the property for the, that's the first step toward coming into compliance, is that correct?
Depends on the violation, I mean, you know, depends on the violation. I mean, there are different ways of approaching, but generally, the city's approach is to, when there is any code violation, whether it's, you know, a building violation or too many weeds, give the property owner the opportunity to correct prior to doing anything else.
So this particular one went to the planning commission and was approved 4 to 1, and it came to the city council, so his next step after going to the planning commission, it tells you in the resolution that you have to go in and take out your building permits and get it inspected and brought up to code, if it needs to be brought up to code, and make all the corrections. He didn't get that change. He was turned down by the city council 5-0. So many times, you told us back in close session, it doesn't matter whether we do it, they do it illegally, knowing they did it illegally, or did it illegally not knowing they did it illegally, the law says you have to give them the chance to make it right.
Well, the first step in that process, in this case, was conditional use from it, which wasn't, I mean, going through the process, and it was denied based upon the testimony that was presented to the planning commission, the city council.
So the council denied it based up on the testimony that was presented at the planning commission?
No. No, it's based upon the testimony that was presented to the City Council.
There wasn't a testimony presented. Under the council liked it, which really surprised me, that each and every one of you decided that that night you were going to make an example out of that man, you know, when we've worked with other people to help them come into compliance.
Well, again, there was a staff report, there was a pretty good taste of a staff...
Paid out a lot of money to get to that point.
That may be, but if, I mean, again, I won't talk about that one specifically, but if there is an accessory building, one of the favorite things to be built without permits in Norco, the accessory building built in a PACA, there is no potential for correcting it, that it has to be removed, and...
Well, then, yes, there is, John, there's a correction, you can actually come to staff and ask how that moved, that PACA, and if they deny it, they can deny it, but you can have it moved, you can have the PACA relocated to another place.
Again, if it's, without beating a dead horse, if it's on a slab, that the property has to be brought back into the condition it was, and the building removed. In the case I believe we're talking about, if the gentleman can meet the code and move it, he's able to do that, I mean, that's a functional equivalent of tearing it down. It just can't be in its current location.
I didn't see it, I didn't see anything in the planning commission report where that there was any, that he had to get variances. Alma went out and measured it, and according to her measurements, it was five foot from the property line.
Nothing is going to be solved by trying to discuss something which isn't on the agenda.
No, I just want to know what the law says. Do we have to give them an opportunity to make it right?
Depends upon the circumstances, if the only way of making it right is physically removing the structure, that I suppose is a chance to make it right, as opposed to the city going and tearing it down, but no, there isn't the ability, there's no legal requirement that, prior to taking an action or making a decision, that he has an opportunity to comply. I mean, in this case, again, we were talking about the same one, it was located, built without permits, without inspections, and located in a place that it was not allowed to be in terms of setback, and there was no potential for him correcting unless the council decided to waive the application of, for example, a setback, and council chose not to do that.
Yeah, I can understand, whether there's things that you have to make variances, or if he gets his permits and he failed to permit, and he's not willing to correct them, I can understand, you turn it down, making him tear it down, but not even give him an opportunity.
We may be talking about two different things, so...
We're talking about the one of Loza, L-O-Z-A, that was...
Yeah, that's what I thought, that's the one I thought we were talking about. It kind of slopped over into somebody else you represent, and I thought maybe that we might have been talking about that one. But, again, there was a public hearing, two public hearings on this issue, and based upon the facts, the council felt, as did the planning commission, that it shouldn't be allowed to remain in its current location, and the council was unwilling to waive provisions of the code in order to allow it to do that, and in fact, as I recall, the appellant didn't choose even to speak.
No, he didn't speak, he didn't know what was going on, he was sitting over there right in front of me, he didn't know what was going on, I didn't know it was him at the time. First time I'd ever seen him, and all of a sudden, he found out what it was, and he raised his hand, then Ted brought it back at the last meeting.
Harvey, however, was the appellant. I mean, the city can't drag him up and say, "Talk to us."
Well, you can make sure that if the appellant is in the audience, you know, and you need to come up and speak, or whatever.
And actually, in this case, I think that the issue that the council was faced with finally, on that issue, and I think I'm thinking of the same one, was the potential for reconsideration, which failed.
That is correct, that's what we had to...
Yeah, I mean, the minutes that you're looking at aren't consideration of that issue on its merits, that happened two weeks prior to that, and the issue that's in these minutes is simply a request...
For the reconsideration.
Whether or not they would reconsider it and notice it for what would have been this meeting, and the council chose not to do that.
So, in other words, on a particular case on 7th Street, 735, somewhere in that neighborhood, 7th Street, the men built a barn in the back, and it had a house in the front, and there was code violation on it for 20 something years. You told them, you could...
Mr. Sullivan?
You can make him tear one down, but you can't make him tear the choice down.
Mr. Sullivan, we have to stay within...
The opportunity to make it right.
Mr. Sullivan, we want to stay on the item that we have, which is 2A in this minutes.
Well, we're talking about the law giving you an opportunity to make it right, and not government just taking over.
Actually, as you know, under the Brown Act, what we're talking about is 2A, and 2A, in this case, it was a failed motion to reconsider an action which had been taken two weeks prior.
And I got a question on the reportable actions after closed session tonight, do I do it now or under other matters?
We're right now discussing 2A, which is on this agenda item. You're more than welcome to...
Well, I didn't find a place to write up, that I could write up a card. You could go right into the...
If you want to, if you want to talk about it on public session, you can, on 4?
Yeah, I think probably the most appropriate place is public comments.
Public comments, okay, thank you.
Are there any other cards?
Do we give him his money back for, you played for the planning commission for all that?
No.
Some of those CUPs are $10,000. So, do we give him the money back?
No.
No other cards on this item here?
Other cards. Do I have a motion to approve? 2A, I have a motion to approve, I'll second.
Please vote. That motion carries unanimously.
And Robin, you pulled D.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so I'm going to guess, it's a question for you, Gina. So, on the resolution to enter into the reciprocal agreement with the franchise tax board, can you explain to me what has been done in the past, or if this is like a recurring, like a renewal of what's been done in the past, or give me a little bit of a history on what's been done in the past, why we need to do this going forward, and what this agreement means as far as benefits to the city and benefits for the tax board?
Well, this is a renewal, and in the recent past, we've haven't been implementing it as thoroughly as we would like, I can honestly tell you that. Going forward, we will be implementing the program, which is taking a look at the data that the state gives us, and then looking at our business license, see if that individual or that business is working in, has a business in Norco, and then we send them information regarding getting a business license. The reciprocal agreement with the state is we send them data as well, and they are able to look into their system to see if that individual is submitting sales tax to that, to the state of California. So, that's where the reciprocal agreement occurs.
So, basically, if we have people paying taxes but not getting a business license, we're going to follow up on that, and then in reverse, if the state is not getting taxes but we have somebody with a business license, they would follow up on that end.
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you for the clarification. So, move to approve.
First and a second?
Please vote. That motion carries unanimously.
And Greg, you pulled F.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Chad.
Evening, sir.
How are you? Okay. So, this is on transition of our retail water sales to the city of Riverside, and I have a few questions on, and correct me if I'm wrong in my little history lesson here, last year, we wrote a, the council wrote a letter in opposition to the overhead transmission lines, the reliability project that is going in the Santa Ana River and through parts of Norco. At that time, we, after we wrote that letter of objection, we received a letter from Riverside Utilities that Norco and Riverside had, had maybe, let's say, a verbal agreement to connect at Arlington to give us an emergency water source, that we were going to connect that water line. And upon that letter of opposition to the overhead power lines, Riverside wrote us a letter telling us to pound sand, okay, that they were no longer going to partake in that project to provide us water, okay? So, with that, how is this a good, I see how this is a good deal for the city of Riverside, how is this becoming a good deal for us, that we are now going to give one, two accounts, one of our largest water accounts to the city of Riverside, and we're going to lose $240,000 worth of water revenue, and I guess, let me get to a couple of my questions. This is to be offset in reduced purchase water needed from external water suppliers. What is that dollar amount that is going to reduce that water cost, and what triggered that is that we have take or pay contracts? So, let's, that's my first part of this statement.
Sure. So, the cost of water on average is about, let's say, $1,000, it's pretty close, between $950,000 for our external sources versus our groundwater. Throughout the year, we balance our water, and we have our take or pays, but we still need additional water that we pump from our wells. So, the balance as far as how we offset that and recognize we have take or pays, we still need, we still need well water, so in regards to that, we balance it by saying, I may be taking less well water, or if, for example, if, in this one case, if Corona takes water from Arlington, that lowers our obligation, I'm able to use either more well water, which is cheaper for us, or not use the water at all, which means I wouldn't give that water to, they normally use for the nursery, or in this case, the cemetery, I wouldn't have to use that water because, purchase it because Corona has taken it. So, it's really a balancing act as far as where our demands are, but as far as the quantity of water, we feel, and I feel it's offset by the fact that I don't have to purchase that water, which could be all from imported water sources if my wells are down, so I'm paying more overall for all my water. But, the reality is, is that we have such a balancing act with our partners, that it's, I believe it's a, it's really a, the term is, it's basically, it's a non-factor to us, it's pretty much evens out, I'm not buying it, I'm not, I don't have to sell it to earn the money back, so that's the way I look at it as far as how this occurs.
So, we really don't know it's a push, though?
That's the term I think I was looking for, it's in essence, a push.
Okay, so, not only with selling the acre feet, we also have associated revenues with meter costs, let's say, fire protection, double detector check fees, that I'm sure the cemetery has fire protection. Are those revenues, loss of revenues included in this $240,000 number?
Yes, everything's included what we lose.
Okay, so, since we're in the business of selling water also, where are we with this emergency connection? What...
We've actually re-engaged with the city of Riverside, they've approached us indicating their willingness to re-engage in that discussion, so we're actually looking at, working on getting a draft agreement from their city attorney for that interconnection. I'm hoping to get that hopefully in the next week or two to start reviewing. We're already planning on, in the budget that will be discussed in the next couple of weeks, money for that interconnection occurring, because we have, basically, my individual discussions with staff is that they've been given direction from the city manager and the director of their utilities to move forward and to get that agreement going, in addition, looking at potential, not just have the connection, but potentially selling water to us that they have, that's actually cheaper than other sources that we currently buy, and so there's a lot of positives coming out of discussions that have developed in the last month, so we're moving forward with that, and at this point, I have a lot of confidence, hopefully we'll be able to achieve those goals.
And that would be, that cost would be borne by them to make the inner tie, the connection?
No, that total cost is ours because it's, we're seeking it, and it would be our duty to make the connection, put the station in, and do any improvements that are required to do that, and...
What would be your guesstimate of that cost?
It really depends on, because we're looking at it right now, how we do the connection, whether it's going to be in the road in a vault, or if we can get a side property, maybe something from somewhere nearby that fits the pertinences that we need. Right now, I'm budgeting for maybe a quarter million to get it done properly, but it'll, it depends on actual design, what we get involved.
Okay, so, my feeling is this, this is a great deal for the city of Riverside, and my contention is, at this time, that, one, we don't have a written agreement that they would tie to our water system, okay, for a connection, other than conversation, but this is a written agreement that we're going to sign our rights, and I think we should go back to the city of Riverside and ask them to pay the cost of connecting to us, because with us giving up this water, these water sales, that to me would offset the connection fees, and they're going to make money on this deal. I want this to be good for Norco and not only good for Riverside. So, that's all I have for questions.
I'd like to make a comment regarding that, and I agree with your sentiment on its face, but there's a couple of things we have to understand about this, is this is, this agreement is being brought forward really just as a paperwork item into, to identify what was done and why it was done. The city of Norco provided these services simply because Riverside didn't have the services at the time for these residents or these businesses that were in the city of Riverside's jurisdiction in the first place. So, we were accommodating them because they couldn't. Now that they have their water line out to the extent to their borders, they are now seeking what is, which is their right to service the customers in their, in their service area. So, the point of really having this document is to formalize that we were providing service, and why we did it within the jurisdiction, and there they're now taking it over, and we understand that, and it's formalizing it so we can understand what happened. In regards, that's the main reason why this is being brought forward, is that Riverside wanted to have some paperwork that emphasized why this was being done and how, and we were okay with that, and we brought it in this format, but the overriding thing is, I understand, is that they actually have this right to simply service them, and Norco can't fight them on it because it's their jurisdiction. So, I don't feel we have a leg to stand on to demand anything in that regard, to have them pay for something, and so that's why I don't want to necessarily emphasize that tact in this approach, because I don't think I have any leg to stand on to force that hand, and I think it would be only counterintuitive to what we're trying to do, and which is very valuable to me, having another alternate source of water is very important, especially this past year, where Arlington's Salter was down for two months, I was going to JCSD to ask for water, and they were really good about providing it. Having that source of water, especially in that area, is very beneficial to us as a system, and so I really do look at this as a win-win, that's why I originally approached Riverside in the very beginning, a year and a half ago, to do this, is because I needed alternate sources, that's my job to make sure we are, we have those sources when we need them, and if we'd gotten this done when we had, when we were approaching it, I probably would have had that service ready to go as an emergency service and not had to talk to another agency to get more water. So, I do believe it's a positive thing, I'm just, that's my concern about taking that tact, is I don't think it's a good approach at this time, based off the facts of where I'm at, that's my only concern.
And I appreciate your comments, I guess two things I would say to that is that we've been serving the cemetery and that nursery forever, okay? That has to weigh in the equation, but the other is, the past actions of Riverside Utilities, at this time, I would not trust them, because we saw what they did with their first agreement, and what, and how they reacted, until we have something secured in writing other than, you know, some verbal... Until we have something secured in writing, other than, you know, some verbal meetings with, they were bad actors, and I don't trust them, and I'm not going to support this at this time unless we see a written agreement from Riverside, the City of Riverside or Riverside Utilities, that they would make that, that inner tire, that connection. Thank you, Mayor.
I have something to add on that. We, and I, I met with Mike Gardner, the city councilman from Riverside. He came out, he apologized to us for the action of their utility company in a letter that was written regarding the, the structure over the, over the water services regarding the reliability transmission lines that they were building, and then our objection to it. He, as a councilman, he actually said they were wrong. And he worked, he went back to his staff to try to get this thing corrected so that we would have a water situation. And, and I know what a problem it is with J C S D and their water services, and they're looking for water too, so that's why it's not an easy deal for them and that. So I just wanted to add that I think that Kevin, you reached out to Mike, the councilman over Riverside, he approached, well, he approached us with the idea of trying to get something resolved in a professional manner, and I think we're taking the steps to do that. So that's all I have to say on it. Go ahead, Kevin.
Mike, you know, is running for supervisor. He's trying to make sure that he's got some friends on this side of the hill. And, and I like Mike, we're actually good friends. But we've been servicing them since '52 or '54, I can't remember, something like that.
These agreements started, were both agencies, in the early 2000s, and I have the documentations where it was camped to council to authorize the connections, and that's when we started providing them permanent services.
There was actually a well right around the corner that was in Norco's, because remember, this is the largest property owner in Norco.
They, they, the nurse, the, the cemetery had its own well sources down by the river, and they were using that for a long time.
That's right.
My understanding, in the, in the early 2000s, it went dry, and they quickly came to Norco to ask for help. I went through all the resolutions awards at that time and copied them to verify, get my own history, understand what had happened, because I was trying to find out, did we ever contact Riverside to say, do you're okay with providing service to this resident in your service area, which we never did, but, which is not an issue. So all the documentation I've seen at this point has been, we started officially providing them water service in the early 2000s, and they paid for all the infrastructure that went in to get them the services, each of those, those properties.
Right. Because the cemetery actually used to be in Norco, was part of our sphere of influence, and I can show you where the well was, where it went dry, and it was actually dug like in 1940 something. My concern is what happens with a larger piece of property on the other side? Will, if they decide to do something there, will that then be serviced by Riverside?
The short answer is no.
Okay.
Because that's in our sphere of influence, and we would service that. So if they build homes up in the hills, we would take care of that.
And then it'll also, in terms of, of, there's no, they kind of alluded to it, no strings attached, i.e., I'm kind of bending where he's bending, because I kind of want this agreement to go through before we sort of say, okay, yeah, we'll go with it. And it sounds like we can't do anything about it in terms of saying yes or no. But I would, I mean, I think we're still opposed to the high tension wires, I think I am, but I'd really like this agreement to go through before we kind of bless this thing. Is there a way to do that?
I mean, certainly the council can elect to hold off on this, and I can inform Riverside that it just, with the council elected to hold off on it until the agreement with the emergency connection was done, and they can choose to take that for what it is. They're planning to start serving those customers now, so they're moving forward regardless to start serving those customers. We've been given notice to sever our, our connections, which we're planning on doing. So they're going to start regardless. Remember, this is really just more of a paperwork thing to show the agencies communicated what was going on, and this is what they, they asked to do. So we would certainly accommodate what the council wants as far as holding off, wait till the other agreement. It, it doesn't affect me, and I don't think it really affects Riverside, this is just kind of codifying what we've done.
I want to hear what the better question is behind me. I hear, the better question is, what's the better question? No, please.
John?
What's the better question?
Oh, the, I wouldn't ask.
Well, ask it, I want to know. What's the better question?
It's, it's already been covered, that Chad's comment, that we don't have any existing agreement with Riverside to provide water service to customers that are within their city limits.
Okay. So I don't know why they want this, but...
But I think, maybe we look at it the other way, and taking Mike, Councilman Gardner's tact, is that, you know, he, he basically told us in our meetings to try to move this forward, which he was able, successfully able to do, as far as the, the interconnection, and that, that work is, is ongoing, is that he doesn't believe this is a quid pro quo in anything. He wanted to deal with this, all right, to right or wrong, and move forward, and the staff is, in, in good faith, I'm assuming, moving forward, do that. I think, I would like not to create a quaid process, where we're, we're now insisting it's a quid pro quo, of we give you this, you give that. If, if we move forward, which is the right thing to do of, of codifying this agreement, and they choose to balk for whatever reason, then shame on them. But I think Norco should stand tall and do the right thing, which is what staff is recommending tonight.
Thank you.
Erwin, Robin, any comments?
I have a question for Chad. Chad, just for my information, on the take or pay agreements for water, are those annual? Are those every two years, every five years? How are those evaluated, and when do those take place?
Those are annual, every...
They're annual?
Yeah.
So you can make adjustments in the upcoming year if you find we need a smaller take or pay contract with the loss of these properties?
It's not that it's a take, it's not an adjustment in the contract, that's already set. It's just adjusting, instead of maybe taking more well water to, because I am, because I, I don't need to take as much imported water, I may take more imported water to make up the difference. It's, it's really just shifting where I take water from.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Go ahead, Greg.
A couple of points. Mr. Gardner did apologize to me also, and about this, but I would, I would kind of make this assumption, that, that, that letter that was written by their utilities company, let me ask you this, Chad, you would never write a letter like that unless you showed it to the city manager?
Yes.
Okay. So you read between the lines where that letter came from, all right?
Right.
And it was at someone else's direction.
It was fired.
Yeah.
I would like, but both those gentlemen are no longer with the city.
Okay. But regardless, you made a comment to Councilmember Bash about if there was to be further development in the, in, on the cemetery property, that that would be under our sphere of influence. But looking at this map that's provided for the RPU service area boundaries, all the cemetery property is under Riverside Public Utilities. So I don't, I guess I'm going to disagree that we would never service that, because that is not under our spirit, sphere of influence. If I'm looking at those parcels correctly, it's all Riverside now.
Again, I don't know if this is all the parcels that the, because I didn't check, if this is all the parcels that are owned by the cemetery.
That's what the staff report said.
Basically, the ridge line is, and this basically follows the, so all that property on the hill, where we get all that mud and debris, a good portion of that is owned by the cemetery. That's the same area that, that the flood control is trying to obtain.
The cemetery wouldn't let us use to try to save the houses on that side, and they have a pipe dream that they want to build houses on those hills. But we will be smarter than the council in the old days and not rezone that.
Correct.
I hope.
I mean, on this letter from City of Riverside, they addressed seven different parcels. And obviously, two go to the nursery, and the other five are the cemetery. So I don't see by this map that this is under our influence at all.
I guess, let me preface my previous comment, then, just to, I don't want to oversimplify the statement.
I don't want to.
Is that if anything that is owned by this nursery needs, that's in the sphere of influence of the City of Norco, needs water service, it would be done by us. If there is truly nothing that this nursery owns and it's entirely within the sphere of influence of Riverside, then Riverside is entitled to provide them service.
Like I said, their actions, the first time, I would say shame on you. I'm not going to trust, to finish that expression and have it be shame on me. Thank you.
Greg, you, you pulled this, and I think most of us, I would probably have the same situation, probably we could bring this back for further information regarding the situation there, and maybe reach out to the city and maybe bring this back. So for more clarification, I know Councilman Bash has issues, Councilman Newton has issues, and the more we discuss it, it, we got to get the map done right as far as the parcels go, so...
The map's correct.
Okay.
It's not that it's not correct, my statement initially was, I believe, was wrong.
Okay, all right. So if, I just, what he said is, the, the map is correct, but his statement was wrong.
I had oversimplified my statement originally to, to Councilman Newton, was, in regards to that, I was trying to say that any property that is owned by the cemetery, that's within our sphere of influence, we would provide service. And Councilman Newton was correct in pointing out that the map that are showing the parcels that are there, show that are all within the City of Riverside influence, which is correct. So, but, so if anything that they own that's not shown on this map particularly is in our influence, we would provide service if they were built there. But most of that area that's possible, that's in our sphere of influence, that might be their property, would be on the hills, which we already told the issues, it's just not buildable. I apologize.
Okay. So if we were to hold off on this and, and table this matter, so you could get further clarification from the City of Riverside regarding...
It's fine.
You know, the connection issue and everything, so we...
Sure.
Have a better situation. It's easier, probably a cleaner for us to, to vote on something like that. So with that, I would, unless your objection is that...
No, I'll, I'll make a motion to continue off calendar.
Have a first and a second to continue this off calendar.
Please vote.
And Greg, you pulled G.
This one will be easier, Chad, as the mayor said, I have issues, but not as severe on this one. Just some questions on the sewer lift station. There, there weren't any maps included, and where's the location of Corona 1 and Valley View number 8?
So I apologize for that. The Valley View number one is at First Street and Valley View.
Okay.
Okay. And Corona is at the, I think it's the cul-de-sac area, it used to be that disputed area, we have that road off of, between Hidden Valley and, I think it's, shoot, Corona Avenue, the end.
Okay.
Where there's a, what's that?
Sedona.
Sedona.
Okay.
It's where, right now, there's development potentially going to happen, where there's a car wash in a, in a 711 or something like that. And basically, we have a lift station currently right in there, and we're looking to build a, basically double the size in that same lot.
Okay. So in, in the staff report, it, it talked about those lift stations being aged and undersized. So the aging, I understand and accept. Undersized, to me, means that there's been development occurring that has now made those lift stations undersized. Now, is that correct?
No, it's, they originally put in, and again, it's a, it's a two, two-size thing, it's, it's they were, they were built undersized in the first place. I mean, these are very old stations, you know, they're, they're almost 25, 30 years old. They were undersized in the first place to meet their expectations. It wasn't that there was, you're right, you would think would be new development, it's just they were not the right size in the first place, the way they're constructed is antiquated, so they need bigger wet wells, they need, they need different types of pumps and setup. So we just elected at this point, just to, to construct a whole new station and size it correctly to meet our needs.
Who designed this plan for the lift stations?
The original work...
Oh, no, the one that we're bidding today?
Yeah, it went out to RKA, they worked on it, and they hired a subcontractor to develop the lift stations specifically. And so it was a, it was RKA.
Okay. And, and I just can't recall, did that, did that cost come to council, or do you, do you remember the cost of the design on this?
It was, I believe, I believe it did go to council, it was $70,000, I think it was.
And it, that's been a while ago.
Yeah, it's, it's been almost, almost two years now, taking a while.
Okay. And I think part of it was on the budget, but just a couple last quick questions on the addendums, and as regard to project cost. On your addendum number two, this has to do with my favorite utility, Edison, and page, I believe it's on page nine of addendum number two.
Okay.
Just real quick. Who would be required to pay any fees that Edison might require? City of Norco will pay all fees related to Edison. What is the magnitude of the Edison fees, and is that accounted, that's not accounted into this increase that we're going to have in this budget?
It is not accounted in this budget. I'm waiting for Edison to give me, because they would not begin their design until we, until we finished our project of the design, which we did recently and gave to them. They have now, they expect to have, because I talked about today, they expect to have the final design and cost estimate to me next week.
Okay.
But, so I'm waiting on that. So that would be another thing I would come back to council, and depending on the cost, you know, if they say it's $10,000, I can get that authorized to the city manager's...
Let me tell you right now.
I know.
Okay.
I need to add a couple zeros, but...
I'm concerned that it's going to be over your 10% that we give you plus or minus to work with on a million bucks.
Most likely, I would not want to use the 10% contingency, I would come back as a, as a sole item to authorize payment to Southern California Edison.
Okay. And then on addendum one, page seven, this is, I think, a very legitimate concern that I want us to be careful of, is that with contract time, the city may elect to provide additional days, that's to the contractor, warranted based on Edison's written correspondence regarding their project work schedule. I would be 100% confident that this project will be completed waiting on Edison, okay? And I want to make sure that we're protected from the contractor, from additional overhead costs, okay, waiting on a utility.
Right.
Okay? And so however you work through that...
And most of the contractors, when we met in our previous meeting, wanted to wait until Edison, and their clock didn't start until Edison was completed. But we basically said, there's a lot of work that can be done while Edison's doing theirs, and we can run our existing plant to keep the flow while Edison, and they're testing the new plant, the new connection for the, for the power. And so we can keep ours running, they can disconnect existing, so we've talked about that, but you're absolutely right, we will make sure that we're, on both sides are covered reasonably and fairly, but we believe we have talked through the process of what needs to be done to ensure, because their biggest concern was, we need to keep a lift station active, existing, and I'm supposed to operate and get the other one active, I need the new connection from Edison. And we said, basically, you're going to be able to disconnect the existing, power to Edison will power the existing with our portable generator, we'll take on site, and they can use, and it keeps that lift station running till we do the permanent connection to that. So we will make sure it's fair, they will make sure it's very fair, that they're not unduly penalized. They're more worried about the actual lift stations that are coming prepackaged from a third-party vendor, and when, how that's going to impact them, and if they're going to be expected to have that in place.
Okay.
So there's two different sizes that they're worried about, we're, we'll make sure in the end that it's a reasonable affair, but it gets done in a reasonable amount of time.
Yeah, I just don't want us to increase any overhead...
Right.
Waiting on...
Yeah, 60-day delay because of Edison.
Yeah.
Believe me, because this is just right now, we don't even have their schedule, how long it'll take them to construct. Once we get that, we'll say, okay, Edison says they can get it done in 45 days, so therefore, here's what we're going to change.
You're funny boy. You're a funny boy.
I can dream. I can dream.
Thank you, Chad.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Chad, just for clarification, $500,000 allocation was made, and then the bid came in at just over $800,000. Where was the estimate off, or what happened to have such a big change from what was allocated to what we need?
It was primarily because I changed the project. When we initially budgeted this late last year, and we started the process, we were looking at potentially a rehab, and it just wasn't possible. What we had there was just so inadequate, talking with staff and what our demands are and the repairs that we're constantly doing on equipment, it just turned into a complete replacement project. So I expected this to be significantly higher.
And then one other thing I need clarification on. On the bid sheet that you gave us, and thank you for doing that, because it provides a lot of information, I'm trying to wrap my head around why bids for the exact same thing are so incredibly different. So on item number 5, it says coordinate with Edison regarding the electrical service, install the required conduit, wiring, and new panel. So our first one is $45,000, the next one's $15,000, and then we have another contractor that bid $1,300. Like, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around that. Can you explain that, how the bids would range in that area?
I could probably explain it, but I'm sure Councilman Newton would do a much better job than me in being professional at the bidding process. But basically, I mean, contractors can put their costs in any particular bid item. It doesn't, we don't judge it based off of whether we think that cost was reasonable or not. It's total low bidder.
The bottom line.
Believe me, I'm sure myself and Councilman Newton, anyone looks at a contract, go, this is not even close. But in the end, it's low bidder, and we don't, we can't really deny it, because we think that's a garbage bid. It's just contractors will choose, especially where it depends on, they may get potential change orders, they'll increase their quantities and their unit cost in those areas, because they think there's likely a change order here in this contract, and that's where I might get more money. So there's various reasons why they do it.
Okay, I just am having a hard time. So it's basically where they want to pad their contract to make their money, is what you're telling me?
Yes.
Okay. And what does coordinating with Edison entail? Is that a couple of phone calls, or what does that, what is that money paying for when we say coordinate with Edison?
It entails a lot of aspirin. But it's, coordination is simply, they're going to be, and we're doing the initial part, which is the design, working with that, make sure we get the fees paid, so that we're doing that on behalf of the contractors. That's really on us. Their coordination is when Edison's coming out, when they're pulling the power, to make sure everything's in place, so that they understand what's been installed, and where their connection points are going to be to our project, so our contractor knows where they connect, where Edison stops. That's really all coordination is, is verifying, because the city's taking the onus of guiding a design, paying the bill, coordinating it, so that, and then we coordinate the contract, let's know when Edison's going to do the work, so that they know when they theoretically can start their connection to that service. So like I said, the reality is, there's not much you're doing, other than connecting to where they're dropping their power.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Greg, you want to make a motion, or what do you want to do?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A first and a second?
Please vote. The motion carries unanimously.
Greg, just to let you know, my son-in-law's alignment, they have the same problems with PG&E, and he's out working all his contracts as SCE.
Ted, let me say, I have no problem with the linemen. It's Edison.
I know.
And I'll never have a problem with a worker in the field, it's just that Edison has every job in California impacted. And it'll be longer than 90 days, buddy.
He agrees. He'll agree with you on that one. Okay, we go to four public comments. Cheryl, do you have any cards?
Cat over street.
Good evening, Pat.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Well, you know, our Uber horse week. Highlight for me is the parade. Hoffman is our grand.
I have it, thank you very much.
And I have the signs for your, you're going to be riding on when you and Robin get together to figure that out.
Yeah, I think Berwin strapped me in front of the NART truck, but...
Well, we could put you on top of the hood. People need to see. But I urge everyone to come out. It's going to be a fabulous parade. We have... 1,000 people between Corona Avenue and Valley View will know where they're supposed to stand. Welcome to ride on the trolley. Thank you.
You just have to sign a paper, Kevin.
At Waver, yes.
Thank you, Pat.
Mayor, I think the mic is needed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For the podium. Thank you. Ruth Milam.
Good evening, Ruth.
Hello. My name is Ruth Milam, and I actually drove up from San Diego to get a feel for what's happening in Norco, and you guys are doing a great job. I own the property on Sixth Street, next to Jack in the Box, and I just wanted to take a moment to introduce myself. I think that there are some amazing things that are going to be happening in that section of town, and I thought that it was proper to just make your acquaintance, so that you know that I am the owner of that property, and I'm really supportive of the many possibilities that can be happening with it. I will remain to have that property vacant for a short period of time, as I've been having quite a bit of interest in it. But that was mainly just, I just wanted to take a minute and put a face to a property.
Well, thank you, and welcome. And I want to introduce you to Steve King. Give her a card, all right? He's our planning director. Thank you.
Thank you.
Justin DeWell.
Good evening, Justin.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Good evening. I just want to provide an update from the Office of Assemblymember Sabrina Servantes. The Assemblymember did introduce a new bill, as the Council is aware, in direct response to the concerns she heard from Council and residents of Norco. The number is AB 2123 on that bill, and it does pertain to the redistricting issue. So this bill would allow cities that are served a notice, such as Norco, for a potential California Voting Rights Act violation, in additional 90 days to conduct public outreach and solicit public input before they must make a decision on redistricting, one way or another. So this bill did pass this week in the Assembly Judiciary Committee on a 6 to 1 vote, so it will be heard next in the Assembly Committee on Elections and Redistricting. So we look forward to continuing the conversation with the Council, working with the California League of Cities on that bill. Secondly, I will mention AB 1994. I believe I have brought up this bill in this venue previously, but this bill would require county jails to notify the State Department of Justice whenever a registered sex offender is admitted or released from their facilities. Now, this is a requirement for state prisons currently, but not for county jails. So the bill would close that loophole. And that bill did pass on the Assembly floor on a unanimous bipartisan vote, so it will be heard in the Senate next. The next bill I will mention, very similar, it is AB 2080. This bill also passed on the Assembly floor unanimously. It would require county jails to provide data to the Department of Justice whenever an offender is admitted or released from the facility. So currently, county jails are only required to do one of those, and as a result, the Department of Justice doesn't receive a complete data set on admission and release of offenders from county jails. So this bill will complete that data set. And that is all the legislation I have for tonight, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Justin.
Larry Echoff.
Good evening, Larry.
Hi, Mayor, Council, staff, and all the people behind me. I'd like to invite everybody to our memorial ceremony this year on May 28th, starts at 10 o'clock. Get there a lot earlier to find parking, it's going to be filled up. We have an addition this year of a steak fundue, where they actually take a pitchfork, stick it into meat, put it into a boiling oil, and serve it to you. So this is going to be fantastic. This is put on by the Rotary, the Eastvale Norco Rotary Club. All the money that's raised there goes to fund our new POW MIA monument that's going to be unveiled on Memorial Day. The tickets are online now. If you go, if you put in Norco Veterans Memorial, it'll send you to a link, you click on the link, and thanks to the good people in the, at staff, it is up there now, and you can get the tickets. Please get the tickets as soon as possible, so they can plan on how much, how many cows to dispose of. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry, you can always join me in Rotary here.
Harvey Sullivan.
Good evening again, Harvey.
Good evening again, Mayor, Council, staff. One quick thing here, I just want to go on record one more time, asking for you to agendize Ron Mugar's code case. We believe that he's not being treated fairly by some of the complainants on the case. He met and exceeded all the cleanup things that the city wanted him do on August the 15th, 2017, and the two remaining items, it's questionable whether they, whether there's any validity to them or not, so I believe that he needs a hearing in front of his, the City Council, you all elected to protect the people and their rights of this city, and I believe right now he is just being abused by the attorney that's working for the city. And speaking of the attorneys working for the city, I want to know a little bit about how you go about reporting actions from closed session. When you take any kind of an action back there, it should be reported immediately after you come out, or to the next meeting. Since January the 17th, you've had eight regular, you've had eight meetings, seven regular meetings with the City Council, and each one of those meetings had anticipated litigation on it, and several of them had Ron Mugar's case listed on it. You had a special meeting on March the 27th, at 5:05 PM to 5:37 PM, so he spent 32 minutes with the city's attorney, and he came out and said that, Mr. Marcus said, there are no reportable actions from closed session. Yet, on another one that you had with him on January the 17th, he came out of that one, and the minutes of the meeting showed that there was no reportable actions from closed session. Yet, in an email sent to the lawyer, by Mr. Marcus, the other attorney, he didn't send the email right away, he said that on the 15th, the meeting was on the 17th, the email was sent on the 26th, January the 26th, he said, "I think that the time to, I think that the time has come to resolve this case now. I have authority to resolve this case on what I believe are mutually favorable terms." Well, somebody must have given him some terms to, took some action, so he took some action to, so that, as far as I'm concerned, that should have been reportable. And he also said, "However, with Harvey Sullivan creating so much noise at City Hall, I'm not sure if the city will remain as amenable to the terms I have obtained approval for." I didn't know it was a bad thing if you try to help somebody that's a senior, that's a little mentally challenged, and that's, have some problems on his property. I didn't know it was such a bad thing to help him out, so maybe I'm learning something I didn't know about. There's some kind of movement to silence conservatives or something going on in this state.
Thank you, Harvey.
My question is, and I want to know why there's been eight closed sessions, and each one of them had several items on, one was a...
Harvey, your time is up, but I'll...
I'm going to let the city attorney define what reportable actions are for you.
Harvey, as you know from serving on the Council, that there are many actions that are, that take place in closed session related to real property negotiations or litigation, which are not required by the Brown Act, to be disclosed at the conclusion of the closed session. I mean, it's a negotiation process. When the City Council makes a decision to make an offer of settlement, not talking about Mr. Mugar particularly, just in general, that's not reportable. Ultimately, the settlement is a public action, but it's like any other litigation, that's the reason for closed session. Negotiation over the price and terms of real property, because that's what it is, is negotiation. City Council, you did it when you were in the Council, gives the staff direction, saying, well, here's the most we're willing to pay, or make this offer. That's not disclosable, because there's no settlement, there's no agreement to accept that offer. That's the purpose of closed session. But the statute outlines what decisions are required to be reported out, and just, those categories don't happen to be ones that are. There are decisions, though, that are made, for example, to appeal, a decision is now required by statute to be reported out and voted on publicly. But the reason you go into closed session by and large, until there's final decisions, is that they are intended to remain confidential.
Well, you know, I know for sure that just recently, the lawyer came here and he had a meeting with the Council, and he was authorized to make a settlement offer, and it was, according to him, it was a close vote, the settlement offer was turned down, so that's not an action.
No. Yes, it's an, Harvey, it's an act, you're missing the point here. It is an action, but it's not required to be reported by the Brown Act. It's the, what would ultimately be reported, and the Council directs Mr. Marcus, or me, or anybody else, to make a settlement offer. If the other party accepts a settlement, the settlement becomes public, and at that point, it's not a reportable action, but it's an available public document. But that's the purpose of closed session, that I'm, I mean, you've set through one, a heck of a lot of them yourself.
I know, I have.
And when, and a Council gives direction to, like I said, there are very few exceptions, but price and terms of property and litigation-related actions are not required to be reported out, because they would affect the ability of the city to reach an agreement. I mean, just like, I mean, you're, it wouldn't make sense if the city directed, or, excuse me, the city made a decision to make a settlement offer, to come out and say, well, here's the settlement offer we're going to make you. It's a part of a negotiation process.
No, I understand that, John, but I think... Mr. Sullivan, in the interest of time, we did, it was way past our three minutes, and I graciously allowed the city attorney to define it, but I think what you, you may have to, you know, I'm sure Mr. Harper would be more than happy to be talked to about it sometime, but you, they said we're talking about, not arbitrary court case, we're talking about a specific case. So with that, I'm going to have to call for the next card. Thank you.
Jeff Cahen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, staff. I appreciate the recognition at the beginning of the meeting on George Ingalls Day Ceremony, but I want to make sure everybody's clear that it's a huge team of people, there's a lot of participants, and I want to make sure that we recognize all those, and I'm in fear of missing somebody, but I want to make sure, take my three minutes and recognize. I thank the Mayor for inviting Jim Pixley to come and be our main speaker. Jim knew him, and even after 51 years, it was quite emotional, him... Jim knew him, and even after 51 years, it was quite emotional, him recalling the moment when he found out that George had died. We also want to thank Sparky Panzer and Brian Petrie for helping to dedicate the USA sign. Sparky did a lot of actual work up there, and Brian did a lot of the coordination and calls and working with the Deese family. And I want to appreciate Troop 33, the scouts, for coming out and helping with the flag, and also the Norco High School Air Force Junior ROTC cadets that showed up to help us with the flag retirement lowering as well. Want to appreciate Robin, thank you for FFA coordinating with the flowers for Mary Deese and the wreath for the George Ingalls Monument. The Benton Courts, they are a tremendously talented family here in Norco, and we've utilized them for all six George Ingalls Days since we, since their inception in 2013. Bethany sings the National Anthem, and Mitchell and his father David play taps on their bugles, so it's a great tradition to have the Benton Courts participate, and they're always willing and available to come and help us out, so I want to give them a shout out. Of course, Patty Ireland and Hank and all their staff for preparing the site and doing all the coordination, along with everybody else on the Parks and Rec staff who always go above and beyond, Michelle Anglin and Robin Shepherd and Michelle Ehrenberg and just all the guys that work for Hank up at the, at the monument. Gary Evans kind of unofficially shows up and takes a lot of great photos so that we can memorialize the ceremonies up there. Gary's done a great job. I want to give him a thank you for taking such wonderful photos up there. And last but not least, we absolutely have to thank Bobby Mendoza. Bobby Mendoza helps out at our, not only George Ingalls Day, and he knew George, but he's there for our Veterans Day. He does sound for us there. He does, he volunteers for all three parades in town. He also does the sound up at Nellie Weaver for the Christmas Festival. He helps Kevin out with December 7 ceremonies for, what, 11, 12 years? He also does sound for us for the Hillbillies at our summer concerts, and he is just a great volunteer. He doesn't, again, this is all volunteer time, so a huge thank you to Bobby Mendoza and his crew for all the sound that they provide. And if I forgot anybody, I'm sorry, but, sorry? Oh, and Dick Hillary, yeah, he was going to be here tonight. I was going to thank him in person, but yeah, he's a wonderful, that deep voice of his is amazing. But to be a veteran from World War II and Korea, he's an inspiration, and I thank him for being a part of our ceremony, too. So thank you, City Council and staff, for supporting our efforts of the Veterans Memorial Committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. And if you have not seen any of Gary's sunset photographs, we did the George Ingalls Evening and the sunset and the flag lowering. Awesome.
Ron Mugar?
Good evening, Mr. Mugar.
Good evening, Council, staff.
You might want to pull that down a little bit. There you go. Thank you.
Basically, I'm here to go on the record to ask that my case be heard publicly by the council and put on the agenda as soon as possible. Secondly, I'd like to bring it to your attention that the course that the city took in trying to abate my public nuisance, allegedly public nuisance, it was a kind of a lose-lose situation for the city. As a property owner, I had to take out of my pocket a lot of money to keep the receiver from coming and kicking me out of my house. And that money didn't go to anything in the city of Norco. That money went to my attorney, and believe me, he practices law in Ontario, and he doesn't come down here to spend any of that money. Same goes for the city attorney. Well, I don't know if he's really the city attorney or, or a prosecutor for the people of the state of California. If he's a prosecutor for the people of the state of California, he really shouldn't be talking to you guys about anything. He should just be going about his business. So I'm not sure what is, what his title is actually. Is he an attorney for the city?
He had a contract related to your case as a city prosecutor.
Oh, okay. So he would be...
And the, the caption of the complaint, which is what you're talking about, that's what the law says, that's how we have to frame it. That's all.
Okay, so he's, he worked for you guys.
He's contracted, but he doesn't work for me.
Right. I don't know what the agreement you have with him, but there's a lot of attorney firms in, around LA that are vying for this kind of a, a deal where they can go after a property owner with, on the health and safety code receivership thing. They get paid by the, the law says that the property owner, if found guilty or whatever, is going to have to pay the attorney's fees that the city contracted for. I don't know what happens if he loses the case, if the city gets, has to pay him or not, but one way or the other, all this money, and it's a lot of money, like he's wanting 39, or he started out wanting $39,000, that's going to people that are not, anything to do with this community. That money's gone.
Did you wrap it up, Mr. Mugar?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes public comments.
All right, we close public comments. Real quick, we're going to go to 5A on that legislative matter. Need a motion? A motion to approve, got a second by Mr. Hannah.
Please vote. Set motion carries unanimously.
As in traditionally, I'm going to take about a 10-minute break. It's 9 o'clock, and we'll be back here at 9:10. Re-cavene council session will be on 6A, review of alternatives to district-based election. Cheryl, are you going to do that one, or is John?
I will, but the city attorney has a few words.
Okay. My, my start is going to be a real short one. It's just for, for those of you who are interested in this agenda item, the purpose of this agenda item is not to have the council make a decision, it's for information only, and it's just a matter of defining what types of election alternatives theoretically exist in California, although, as I think, as we've discussed in the past, is a practical matter. For general law cities, it's either districting or at-large, which is what we do now. But, but that said, after the Citizens Group met with the staff, that thought it was just a good idea for the public to have at least some explanation of what those alternatives were. But no, no decision is going to be made, it's just a receive and file.
Cheryl? Okay. Honorable mayor, members of the City Council, on October 2nd, 2017, the city of Norco was served with a demand letter from a law firm alleging the city's current at-large system is in violation of the California Voting Rights Act. As provided by the Government Code and Elections Code, the city began conducting public hearings to discuss a potential transition to district-based elections and receive public input. After reviewing seven potential boundary maps and receiving hundreds of comments from residents, the City Council determined that there was no means of dividing the city into council districts that would have positive effects on the election of minority candidates different from the current situation of at-large voting. In lieu of immediately transitioning to a district-based election system, the City Council decided to conduct more demographic analysis of previous elections. Also, the City Council decided to study potential options, which I will present here. We have three primary systems. The at-large, which the city currently is under, and this system is where candidates may reside anywhere in the city, and all voters vote for all City Council members. The system may provide assurance that each council member will consider all voters to be his or her constituents. The next system is by district, and that's where candidates must live in the district and are elected by voters within that district. This system may provide assurance that each council member will focus more attention on the geographical constituency that makes up his or her district. And in Riverside County, there are 28 cities, and there are at least 13, excuse me, there are 13 cities that are the by-district, or they're transitioning to the by-district system. And those include Banning, Cathedral City, Corona, Eastville, Hemet, Hoopa Valley, Lake Elsinore, Menifee, Marina Valley, Marietta, Riverside, Temecula, and Wildamar. Of those six cities I just mentioned, they are charter cities. The next system is from district, and that is where candidates live in the district but elected at-large. And this system provides some assurance of geographical representation while possibly providing assurance that each council member will consider all voters to be his or her The options for election systems, for general law cities, they have the three options, at-large, by district, and from, from district. Charter cities have a little bit more flexibility, and they have the options of instant runoff or ranked choice voting, cumulative voting, limited voting, and some hybrids.
Just a quick comment. Norco is theoretically a charter city, keeping in mind that the charter in Norco consists of, I don't remember if I lost count, three or four specific provisions related to Norco, generally related to animal keeping, and the rest is the general law. When the charter was enacted, it enacted the general laws to all other issues, so that in order for a quote charter city to, again, in theory, do those things, the charter, that requires an amendment to the charter.
So with the charter city options, instant runoff or ranked choice voting, this gives voters the options of choosing multiple candidates in order of preference. And there's a sample there of what, what the ballot would look like. This system is used in combination with by-district elections, and there are some cities in Northern California that use this system. Cumulative voting, this allows each voter several votes, typically the same number of votes as there are open seats. Voters may vote for the candidate singly or cumulatively, in other words, more than one vote for a given candidate. And limited voting, voters cast fewer votes than there are seats, so ensuring that a majority group can control the majority of seats, but not all seats. So this is a summary of the different election systems, and I just want to point out that on the far right, the last column, third option down, the by-district, is the only option that is protected or provides a safe harbor from a California Voting Rights Act lawsuit. Did you have something? Okay. The financial impact, Norco currently consolidates its elections with the county of Riverside Register Voter's Office, and just about every city within Riverside County is consolidated, and they're either at-large, or they use the at-large election system, or the by-district election system. The city of Norco actually is the first to have approached the Register Voter's Office for alternatives. And in speaking with the registrar's office, if we were to choose an alternative election system, it would require a new voting system with the county. It would require approval from the Riverside County Board of Supervisors and a certification from the California Secretary of State. A new voting system could potentially cost over $10 million, since it would be a whole new system. Our other option available to us is a vote-by-mail election, which essentially is like absentee ballots, so the election is held by that vote-by-mail process only. And that basically concludes my informational report. If the city attorney has anything else to add to this?
Not a lot, other than, as a practical matter, again, with a few very minor exceptions based upon cities that had adopted charters quite some time ago, in California, it's either at-large or by-district. The state of California has gone on record in the Santa Clarita attempt to go to cumulative voting, of being opposed to that system because they don't believe that they have the equipment set up and the programs to be able to do it, and it's, and it's very expensive. And the Santa Clarita case, actually, Santa Clarita and the plaintiff in their litigation agreed to cumulative voting, and based upon input from the state of California, the judge denied the request.
Anything further, Cheryl?
Nothing further unless the council has questions.
Greg, do you have any questions down there? Kevin? Berwin? Robin? And I don't have any further. Do you have any cards on the matter?
I do have two cards, Mayor. Patricia Overstreet?
Good evening again, Pat.
Hello again. Well, any explanation just muddies the system for me. I don't, this, this from district was, was interesting, that we could still vote for five candidates. I just mainly want you to keep up the fight, you know, whatever we can do to maintain status quo as much as possible for Norco, and remember the circle around the city as far as the district goes. Good luck.
Thank you, Pat.
Mike Thompson?
Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Council. I just have a question to the attorney. When you opened with your statement there, did you say that there was a group of citizens that met with staff, or a citizens group?
Yes, we did. We have a community advisory group that is appointed by the city manager.
So this wouldn't be an ad hoc committee?
No, not an ad hoc committee, it is an...
And these folks on this committee are not going to be made public?
Folks on the committee can be made public.
Oh, I haven't ever heard, that's why I was asking the question.
The committee doesn't exist and wasn't formed for this purpose. The committee, oh, I'm sorry.
The, the committee that he's, and he's talking about, wasn't formed for this purpose, and this is just one of the things that they provide advice to the city manager's office on.
Okay, I was just curious if I heard you right, and, yeah, I would like to know who is on, on the committee, unless it's...
You're about to find out one of them, I think.
Yeah, I'll be glad to provide you that, that information. Yeah, it's, it's a group that actually started up by helping, working with staff to do community outreach, and you saw the presentation earlier this evening pertaining to our newsroom and our new ways of communicating and engaging residents. A lot of the product that came out of the newsroom information this evening actually came from that group. So it's a group that advises the city manager's office and staff in terms of how we can better, better outreach to the residents.
So I can shoot you an email for this information?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mike.
Jody Weber?
Good evening, Jody.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Council, and I am one of those people that were on that committee, and I appreciate being asked to serve based on my experience in districting and redistricting. I do have one question. Cheryl, by chance, do you happen to have the details of the actual voting election software system that the Riverside County uses for elections? Do you have that detail?
Let's see, give me just a minute, I think I do.
Because nobody could answer that question when I actually called a month ago.
Yes, it is Dominion Sequoia Edge 3.
And do you know if, or if the question was asked, whether this particular software system has the capacity to actually perform cumulative voting?
It does not.
It does not, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's where the cost of the, the quote $10 million is, is doing that software and, and machines that can do it.
Yeah, and just for edification, the California Secretary of State has con... Yeah, and just for edification, the California Secretary of State has confirmed that he has not certified any software system in the state of California for cumulative voting, even though it's potentially, it's possible that he can still look into the systems that are already certified by the Secretary of State, because these software systems probably have that capacity, but yet they just haven't been certified for cumulative voting in the state of California. But I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Appreciate the information.
Jeff Kahen.
Good evening again, Jeff.
Good evening. I just, maybe I missed it, but I was expecting by tonight's meeting, and maybe that's my mistake, we were going to get some information back from the demographer on the, I forgot what the word is, but that polarized voting results?
Yeah.
Or something, is that?
Yeah, we're still soliciting information from the demographer with regard to polarized -- I mean, and it's kind of one of those not reportable actions at this point because of the potential litigation that's been threatened by Mr. Schenken.
We originally had hoped to have some results by tonight, so now we're, is that my mistake that I thought by the second meeting of April we would have some results, or?
We've had ongoing results from the demographer, but they've generated additional questions.
Okay, so right now it's considered closed session issue. Okay, so do we have an idea when, because every time he comes back, you might have more questions, we're not sure, or do we think by?
Sometime prior to the time a decision has to be made.
And what's that deadline again?
In theory, June 1.
June 6.
June 6 is when it's the final.
And June 6 is the first meeting of June for council, so that's the last possible. Okay, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
That's all the cards I have, Mayor.
Okay, I'll bring it back to council. Starting down here, Berwin, anything further?
Cheryl, on that new voting system that costs $10 million, is that just for the county system?
Yes, just for Riverside County.
Okay. And one of them up there was like mail-in votes, is there a possibility that sometime in the future that it all might come mail-in votes?
Now they have.
Because I know not too many people go to some of these polling places we have anymore.
Our numbers have increased for vote-by-mail, but that's something certainly I could look into further.
Again, without reaching any final conclusion, the difficulty in this context with vote-by-mail is that it's probably worse in terms of solving a polarized voting problem that a city might Remember, the only reason we're having any of this discussion is because there's an allegation that we're violating the California Voting Rights Act.
Right.
That voting by mail is not something that I would believe anybody who is a proponent of district voting, Mr. Schenken, for example, would ever agree to, partly because it probably has the opposite effect.
Okay, thank you.
Robin? Kevin? Greg? Okay. Cheryl, just for clarification, the new voting system costs over $2 million, is that would be just ours or the state to implement? Say, for example, if the city of Norco had to do their own, what do you think the cost would be for that?
That's pretty much it.
That's it. $10 million for the whole enchilada, for just the city.
That, and if, well, if everybody in the county decided they wanted cumulative voting, there might be some, the cost might not be that much for Norco, but right now we're talking about implementing a system that would allow cumulative voting, and the cost the county tells us, and we've verified this probably about right, is somewhere in the $10 million neighborhood, and it'd be, right now, out of, if Norco wanted to do that, out of Norco's pocket.
For our 12,000 registered voters, okay.
Right, a voting system that would accommodate cumulative voting, for example, and still accommodate the other cities within the county.
Yeah, if they wanted to change.
Right.
And they would still require all the approvals from the Board of Supervisors along with the certification from the Secretary of State, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just making sure I understand that. Okay. No further questions? With that, I'll entertain a motion. First and second.
Okay, please vote. That motion carries unanimously.
Okay, moving right along to 6B, verbal updates regarding trail improvements on California, and I believe that's yours, Chad, right?
So I wanted to come back. As you know, we have been working diligently on trying to move forward with the improvements that the council authorized on California related to the trail and doing that. And per the direction from council, because one of the major issues we discussed was, at the time, we identified at least 47 trees that need to be removed in order to accommodate a 12-foot wide trail with a 6-foot parkway where the fence would go. In reviewing that, what was basically emphasized to us is to, we want the 6-foot parkway, but try to do a smaller trail that can salvage more trees. So we basically went to 8 feet. We still ended up with at least 27 trees that need to be removed. So what I want to do tonight is really, I had staff go out and visually show pictures of where a trail fence at 6-foot is versus the impediments that we face, because we not only face trees, we have encroachments by property owners, we have the right-of-way. It's just we have physical impediments, trees and property owners that have encroached or exist in the right-of-way in order to get 12 feet. But I wanted to show you initially the existing standard, which we have here, because in doing this process and looking around the city, what I quickly realized and didn't really click until now, is this week, is in this process, is that we adopted a standard that has a 6-foot parkway, but we don't have that existing anywhere in this city. We have, other than, I think the newest one is the, on River Drive, River Road, excuse me, the new commercial center, I think that is 6 feet. But everywhere else in the city, it's 3 feet. That where everything's built, up in the hills, it's all 3 feet, down at Bluff Area, where there's curb and gutter and whatnot, it's 3 feet. And I understand the rationale, talking to staff, that originally it was proposed, and what 6 feet is, actually allow farther and bigger growth of, and placement of trees in that area, so it's not compact, it's not hitting our fence, it gives a better space, assuming new trees when they're placed and new developments. This is really a new development standard. What I think we need to strongly look at, and I'm recommending, is looking at an alternate standard for our existing trail system where we don't have the right-of-way, or it's not feasible to use at all. Not sure what happened here. Oh, that came back. And I'll show you by space of the pictures what I'm talking about. And this is going to be a constant theme for every trail we try to rehab throughout the city that is existing. Some simply don't have the 12 feet that we need in the first place. They're only 10 feet wide. So we have to recognize that we're going to have to modify, and what that modification's going to be. And so I just want at least to give you an idea, this is what our current standard says, but I think we need a modification on that. So as far as, just to give you a general perspective, so you see what we're dealing with here, is this is, I had Terry go out, so this is 6 feet off of road edge, and so we're supposed to go 12 feet beyond that. You can see here, there's a physical impediment. We have the right-of-way, as I had said, this entire, we have the legal right-of-way, but there's physical impediments we have to get rid of. So we'd have to wipe out that trail fencing right there, the tree that's right there. Let's see here, go to the areas, again, we'd have to go out, because out in that area too, we'd have to go 12 feet over. We'd wipe out that area there. And you can see, this is what you'd be left with if we did 6 feet. So keep that in mind, if I place it there, that is your trail. And we just keep going through, showing you that difference here of what you have, and almost nothing in those areas there. That one, the complete tree is really in the way, would block the horses. So at least just one of these, you can visually see what we're dealing with and what would need to be done in order to get, and to get this accomplished. Didn't get any riders in the pictures, unfortunately. So that just gives you, again, we can do it, it's just a lot has got to go away. It's scorched earth, and, but you're limited with a small space. So the reality is, is what I'm recommending is that we actually do, go back and use 3 feet, sorry, and I'll show you what that visually would look like, and not make any modifications to the trees or the parkway property. So there's basically 3 feet offset, so it's a little wider there. That, apologize, it's missing, there we go. So again, a little wider, you kind of see the red mark in there, that's where the 6 feet is. So yes, it is definitely going to be closer to road edge, it will be susceptible, as now being hit by cars, we'll certainly still sign everything to indicate no parking, so nobody even tries to park in those areas or pull off on the road, but at least it gives more space without removing the trees. You know, but it will narrow out in certain areas still, as I showed back here, I mean, it gets narrow in these areas, but again, horses can go through there. So, but this is a long-term issue in that if there's a desire to improve our trail system, in the trail portion, we have very hard decisions to make about what that means. If we're simply talking about, let's do trail fencing improvements, not a problem, we can do that all, live long day, and we can place these trail fences and they'll be there. But we just have to pare our expectations of what that will mean. So my recommendation on this, at this point, if there's a desire to actually remove the trees that need to be removed, and some of the impediments, is that we simply go ahead and do 3 feet off road edge all the way down California and call it good. And that's what I'm looking for, direction from the council at this point. And with that assumption is that we'll probably go back to the committee at some point and look at some alternative language in the standard that allows for these future improvements on these types of trails by the city, but on all new development, we'd want to see it as this existing standard shows. You're going to give 6-foot parkway, you're going to have the 12-foot trail, and it will be built that way. But for existing that simply doesn't have enough right-of-way, we need some leeway, recognizing you're probably not going to get 12 feet, and you're not going to get 6 feet as far as the parkway goes, and have that flexibility. We can then just simply design the projects knowing that's our limitation, not having to come back to have you look at every single trail. We'll simply design it so that, recognizing we want the least minimal impact possible on every project going forward. And that includes, don't remove in the trees, impediments by property owners, et cetera. So that's my recommendation to council, and I would appreciate your direction.
Berwin? Any questions?
I was out today, Chad, looking at trails in different areas, you know, that I used to ride on all the time, and some of them are normal, some of them are down to 8 feet, some of them 6, and a few of them are 3 or 4 feet because you have a tree or a pole in the right-of-way, and I don't, the people with carts, I don't believe come over in that part of town, drive, we've got some people that drive wagons, but they drive up in the street like a car and everything, and I never hear anybody complaining about having narrow spots in the trail. I mean, if it has to get down to single file, they have to get down to single file, which most people ride like that anyway. But some of those areas you showed there with the fence being out 3 feet instead of 6, that's pretty wide. I mean, you've still got plenty of room to ride, and you said you'd save those trees by doing it that way?
Yeah, at this point, we would not touch any tree.
Okay.
And I say that with, if we determine there's a tree that's dead, we'll probably remove it, but it's, we're not looking to go remove trees if we don't have to.
Well, what about down the area there where that trail makes that sharp bend? I think that's before you get to Green Leaf or Green Tree or whatever, that little cutoff.
Or is the additional, the additional lane, the turn lane, the right turn lane?
No, it's, that's at 7th. JT, what's that address over, between 7th and the little shop, and the little strip mall down there? Your trail goes this way, then you've got to go between some trees, it makes a jig to the right.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's the one where it's.
Yeah. Green Tree.
Right.
So I didn't see that. You going to be able to work around that part of it?
That's right there. I believe that's Green Tree.
That is.
Looking at theirs, and that's the area there, we're going to take the pavement out, the asphalt, we're going to make it straight, the trail's going to go straight. So we're still doing the pavement work, we're taking out the turn lane, we're putting the trail all the way through, the way trail fencing, and now that turn lane, that pocket is going to be gone. Same thing with the one that's in front of the old liquor store, 7-Eleven, whatever it was, over off of, I think it's 7th.
Circle K. Well, I noticed the other day too, they put that yellow caution tape around there to keep people from cutting through that driveway. Did the city do that?
I don't think so. We wouldn't have done it. I think the property may have done it.
Yeah, because it's, where you can't turn off of California into that driveway. It was one day last week, I noticed that, I forgot to look today, but you had to go to 7th Street to turn instead of cutting through the parking lot there.
Yeah, I don't believe it was city staff, we'd have no reason to do it.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Robin? Kevin?
So, silly question, why can't we just put the fencing right back where it was? I mean, as opposed to moving in at all? It gets pretty narrow there, and then I'm assuming you've had an arborist look at all the trees, because I walked that yesterday, and there's a lot of trees that don't look so good. Are you going to just remove those if they don't look good and then replant them?
And we're only going to remove the trees if they're dead at this point. There's a lot of those trees that are not in good condition, and they've been, they've already been identified by our arborist as poor in condition and probably should be removed at some point, it's just not now. They, a lot of these trees are, in my opinion, a hazard, because they fall, a lot of the branches fall because of their poor condition, but we deal with that, and it happens usually in the high wind time, and it is what it is. At some point, some of these are trees we'll just remove because they fall. But in, I know it's not a desirable thing to remove a tree, and that's not what I'm proposing at this time. I'm looking for, basically, I just want to move forward the project. The reason why we're not putting back where it was, because sometimes, some of them are 1 and 1/2 feet off, some of it's 2 feet off, we're just looking for consistency, saying we're going to do it 3 feet. And that's a reasonable, it gives us a buffer for those vehicles that go to the road edge when they drive, and they're not just hitting it, you know, hitting something with their mirror or anything that's outstanding. We're just trying to have some buffer in trees, what we think is the minimum we should want.
Okay, well, thank you, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Craig?
Thank you. I'm in agreement with that. I like the idea, if you can, and maybe do this with your next standards with the Streets and Trails Commission, is existing conditions, okay? That, we all don't need the pristine 12-foot wide trail if it goes to 10 or 8 or to 6, and we can work with the trees and keep the trees there, I'm all for that. So I think the direction you're going, work with the conditions you have. I'm in agreement with, if the tree is dead, go ahead and remove it, and maybe we can trim up some of the limbs that need it. But you know, maybe there's some spots where you can get that ideal condition of a 6-foot offset in your 12-foot trail or whatever, then go ahead and put it in that way.
Unfortunately, it--
I mean, not in this case, but--
I guess my problem with that in general is, if you're meandering in and out on a specified segment, aesthetically, it would look terrible, in my opinion. And in these cases, and it's pretty much going to be the same way in most, all these trails, is that it just goes in and out because of trees or encroachments.
Correct, yeah, I wouldn't think it'd be on this case on California.
At least your fence line would be streamlined, it would be straight, it's just in and out because of what's there, and that's where the riders can adjust, but at least the fence line is not doing that for you.
Yeah. I meant, as you get further with your commission, that maybe you can just look at those conditions.
Right.
You know, I'll share this with you, I learned this a long time ago from a wise resident, linear open space, okay? That's what you need to create. Thanks.
Okay, Chad, now, you're going to measure the 3 foot from the fog line, or are you, or the edge of pavement?
Edge of pavement.
Edge of pavement, so it's, all right, so that gives a little more-- Edge of pavement, so it's, alright, so that gives a little more room on that, and what's our current width up there on, on those two lanes?
I, I'm not sure, I don't-
I mean, is it 12 or 15?
Oh, I think it's 15.
15, so, okay, so, from the edge, and then the fog line runs through there, and looking at that, you've got about a foot, so at least, if you did a three foot, we're essentially about four feet from where normal people are.
Right.
And, and I'm going to agreeance with you, is that fence should stay straight, because otherwise, you will create what we used to call a passing lane, or a turnout, and next thing you know, the guy's hitting the fence, so you have to keep it straight all the way down.
Right.
You don't, the one thing I do, I am concerned on is, is you haven't taken this back to Streets and Trails yet, correct?
No.
Okay, so, I would hope, when we approved the trail standards recently, we definitely said it was going to be a living document that would be changed as it went through. So, I would hope that you would make sure that this was, it's like Councilman Newton said, that we change this, so working with them to make sure that they're, you get their opinions on this thing, and, and their, and their input. But I agree with you, is that we definitely should, that'd probably work better with a three-foot shoulder all the way through.
Yeah, and again, the intent is to, because of presenting this, is that the assumption is we go back to Streets and Trails to talk about the standard itself, and how we can mold it to something that's more pliable for situations, and giving us more leeway, instead of being rigid, it must be this, that we'll talk about. New, new development existing, and what that can be, so that when we do projects, we can then move forward with that standard and design it with that, and we know it's acceptable based on the criteria of that new, that secondary standard we come up with. So, yeah, definitely, as a overall standard, that will go back as discussion to, to Streets and Trails. As far as the project itself, we're planning to just move forward and get it completed.
Okay, alright. Too many cards on this, Cheryl?
Yes, Mayor, I have one card. Bill Naylor.
Good evening, Bill.
Good evening, Council. Um, I, I am very much supportive of doing work here on California. I do have a few concerns, and I'd like to express those to you. One, uh, when we created the, the standards for the trail maintenance and the, what we want to have in the future on trails, uh, we did understand that there could be some issues that might have to modify them slightly. My biggest concern is in the areas where you have traffic that is supposedly in excess of 25 miles an hour. Uh, California is, again, one of our very busy streets, and I think we need more of a cushion than your three feet that you're talking about. Also, it's been indicated that a lot of these trees are in pretty poor shape, and we will be losing those. You have the right-of-way at the current time, and I hate to see you put a fence in over close to the, the curb, or, since there is no curb, where maybe at some future time there will be a curb, and I know that there's been discussion on, um, flood control, and maybe having curbs and things like that along there to help channel water and such, and at some point, they're probably going to be doing something about that, I'm assuming. And if you do, are you going to end up taking out all this nice new fence that you put in to accommodate your, your curbing and such? I hate to see people, especially government, has a tendency to spend money and build something, and then say, whoops, now we've got to tear it out and do it again because we, we didn't allow ourselves room. You've got the room, put it in at the six-feet distance for the safety of the riders, it's going to help keep the horses back a little bit from the traffic that's going flying through there. 25 mile an hour zone, I wouldn't be so worried about it, you've got people that are flying through there, according to the residents that I've talked to along that street, they just, they're, they, they cringe. Um, and you might need to take some trees out now, but not as many as, um, you know, originally, the thing was said, you might have to take 40-some trees out, right now, maybe if you took a dozen, or maybe even 20 trees out, you probably could get a decent trail through there, and you've still got that six-foot parkway to replace the trees that come out as you need to do that. It just makes sense to me, but, uh, I know that seems like the sentiment may be, go back to where the existing fence is, and my recommendation almost be is, don't do the white fence and save your money, and let us go back and putting in the old fencing until you decide how you really want to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
That's all the cards on this item.
Thank you. Bring it back to council. Starting down here, Burwen, you have any questions?
Robin?
No.
Kevin? Craig?
What Commissioner Naylor talked about was, did you have that discussion in your Streets and Trails? Commissioner, was there a discussion or any-
Yes, I mean, as you may recall, our original recommendation was to not actually do this project until we got all the other flood control items done, mainly because of not wanting to remove infrastructure. Um, the reality is, is anything we put in that does need to be removed because of flood control project, flood control pays to put it back. So, it, it's not like we would be wasting our money per se, it would be wasting, you know, general government money, but it can be there. Um, the issue is really just, and I understand it, is the heartache of removing an awful lot of trees, that they're big trees, they're not, not in great condition, I get that, but a lot of these residents have, uh, a lot of attachments to these trees, as most do when we remove trees. I think in one of the sections, if, there's six trees in front of one resident, and all of them would be gone. They're not great trees, they're not, they're not good in condition, but I, we, I'm sure you'd all get a call, and we'd be having discussions, do we really need to remove them, and then we'd be going back. So, I think over time, um, and, and Bill's correct, it, would it be ideal to have six? Sure, especially with those speeds, um, but you also encourage people to park, even though we're going to put no parking signs, everything else, they will park, they will pull off, um, and people do what they do. Um, but, at this point, I'm just trying to get, of recognizing the concerns about removing the infrastructure, I'm also including the impediments people have built into our right-of-way, uh, but some of them are very nice. Um, it seems to me the only prudent decision to make, and this is going to be citywide in all of our trails, because it'll be a continual issue, is let's modify it, let's say, three foot, and move on, at least get some work done. But if the council wants to wait, I, I'm fine with that too, it's just, let me know what you think we should do right now, I'm just recommending to remove this, let's do three feet, not remove any trees unless they're dead, and do all the other improvements that you recommended, so I can get this, and that we can get this project done.
I would give you that direction, what you just stated. Thank you.
Chad, one of, one of the things, and Commissioner Naylor did point this out, the parkway is six-foot. Did you even plan, did you plan to have any tree, thanks, any trees in that six-foot parkway?
Not at this time, this wasn't part of this project. We could look at doing that, and adding it to the project, it just wasn't because of the significant extra cost. The other issue with that is, we can put trees in, but then we need irrigation, we depend on-
Okay.
The residents to do that, so I need to go to every resident and confirm you're willing to pay, you're willing to put the irrigation in, water this tree. If not, because that's part of our tree planting, um, urban forest plan that we did, is if folks are willing to pay for the water, we'll put in a tree. And as far as the conditions, if money was available to plant trees, you have to actually maintain the water for that tree to, to keep it alive. So, we'd have to go to each of these residents, confirm they want a tree, and get the irrigation in, if it can be done, it just prolongs the process. So, this certainly is, if we did six feet, we can come back in the following year and then follow up with a tree planting program. We first got to get past the issue of, what's going to happen when we remove the trees?
Okay, and then the other thing, and you alluded to it, you've got a 15-foot roadway now, right now, plus the six-foot, you've got 21 feet, so now we have a passing lane on the right-hand side for some car, and I know what they do to that.
Unless we put the trees in.
Yeah, unless you put the trees, because you're not putting any trees in, it's going to leave a barren.
Yeah.
So, I'm kind of in, in the same situation as, without having the trees there, without having the, the extra space, is that we keep it to three, your suggestion was to three foot, and go from there, and then when the flood control district evolves, and we magically get a wider road, or something happens in there, we can look at it.
Yeah, basically, in this situation, it's one-
It's one of those things, so.
Yeah, in this situation, it's one property owner, and all those trees go, like, it's six to eight trees would go.
No, we, we wouldn't want to see that. So, with that, if nobody else has any further, I think Greg, you had a suggestion for a motion then?
Yeah, I just want to make sure Chad, you have the, you have a direction?
I have a direction, if, if the council's good with that, yes.
Do you need a motion on that, correct, Cheryl, or are we just going to?
I think direction's all that's needed.
Yeah.
Okay, so you have your direction.
I do, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And this is seven. Okay, this is, uh, moving on to 7A, it's a public hearing, and this regarding the proposal to amend Chapter 3.60 of the Norco Municipal Code, reference changes to the compatible model of ordinance from the Riverside Conservation Authority.
Good job.
Good job, you like that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Uh, this is a cleanup item. Uh, the City of Norco, along with 13 other cities and a couple of other organizations, are member agencies of the Multispecies Habitat Conservation Plan, that, that is run by the Riverside Conservation Authority. Uh, the, the reason for the plan, just briefly, is, is in conjunction with the transportation uniform mitigation fee, these are key elements of the Riverside County Integrated Plan. And the purpose for it was to come up with the, the MSHCP, so that the taking of species would be covered by one document, and so that, uh, large projects such as the Hamner widening, or the Hamner Bridge replacement project, would not have to do its own findings and mitigation and replacement for the taking of habitat, it's all covered with the MSHCP. So, City of Norco's been participating, uh, every year, RCA hires an auditing firm to go over the receipts and the submittals by the member agencies. Our submittals are compliant with those agreed upon rules, except our resolution that implemented the collection of fees and our participation in the program, didn't match the model ordinance when it was first created, when the MS, uh, when the MSHCP was being created. So, this is a cleanup item to make our ordinance match what the model ordinance, uh, says, and briefly what that is, is there, uh, we had a section that was left out of our ordinance that's added with this one, Section 2, which is at the end of the ordinances, ordinance which is attached for council consideration. The second is, there was a definition that was included in the city's ordinance for definition for minor additions that was not included in the model ordinance, so that definition's been taken out. Uh, there were definitions for city and city council which were included in the model ordinance, which our city ordinance did not include, so those, those have been added. And our city ordinance required collection at least quarterly, whereas the model ordinance is, uh, required at least monthly, and we do submit monthly as required by the ordinance. So, these are cleanup items, so that our ordinance will match the model ordinance as was created by the Riverside, well, now Riverside Conservation Authority, back then it was ARCOG, but, so with that, um, I will answer any questions, and that, City Council may have.
Greg, I'm starting down there with you.
No questions, thank you, Ted.
Kevin?
Uh, no questions, I sit on the Riverside Conservation Authority, and it's, it's very important we keep the program going. Some of you may not be old enough to remember the famous K-Rat that we were trying to protect, and, uh, I remember Norco may have stopped many, many projects, and so this, this plan is actually a model nationwide for getting, basically what you do is you build in one area, but you actually assist in creating habitat in other areas. One of the things we're assembling is a throughway for coyotes and, and wild cats and all, foxes and things like that, K, and K-Rats, and snakes and all kinds of things. So, it's, it's actually a very, very important, doesn't look so important, but it's actually a very important piece to development for the City of Norco. Thank you.
Robin?
Burwen? I just have one, and normally you put it in here, Steve, is the fiscal impact report, is there any to the city?
No.
And then, is, is it part of the strategic plan that we had a relationship to it?
In that, we, uh, the improvement of communication, uh, within the city and between agencies, it does implement that.
Okay, that's my question, Cheryl, do we have any cards on this?
Uh, yes, Mayor. Head over street. Okay, no more cards then on the side.
With that, um, okay, got a first, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Grendmaier?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Norco, California, amending Chapter 3.60 of the Norco Municipal Code to reflect changes for compatibility with the Riverside Conservation Authority, multiple species habitat conservation plan, model ordinance to implement the agreement, code change 2018-01.
Please vote. That motion carries unanimously.
Okay, moving on to 8A, this is an appeal hearing, and I have staff presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, this is an appeal of an action that was taken by the Planning Commission. At their meeting, uh, March 14th in 2018, the Planning Commission approved an accessory structure, uh, for 324 square foot cat shelter, storage shed. Uh, this is a result of a code action that is occurring, the, the structure was built without permits, and the, the applicant approached the Planning Commission to get approval of that, of that building, to make it legal. The, the property in question is 28,580 square feet. Most of that, well, a, a big chunk of that, 15,000 square feet is primarily flat, but the third, a third of the property slopes down in the rear towards Hidden Valley Parkway. The, the property in question is part of Norco Hills Specific Plan, and one of the things that occurred with Norco Hills Specific Plan is, uh, it's not, the number of animal units is not determined similar to the way it's done in the A120 zone. If you recall, there was a lot of grading within Norco Hills Specific Plan, to the point that some of the lots were rendered not compatible to any animal keeping. So, what happened with the first amendment to that specific plan is each lot was analyzed for its potential to keep large animals, and then, once that number was determined, each lot had a recording on the number of animal units allowed per, per that lot. And some lots not, were recorded with no allowance for animal units. This lot in question actually was recorded to be allowed to have one animal unit on a property. The, the, the structure that's in question meets all of the requirements for an accessory building, with the exception of the requirement that there be a five-foot bear, buffer around the animal keeping area, and around, um, or to any buildings existing. And the problem with this lot is, it really, even though it was recorded to have one animal unit, it does not, it, there is no area on the property that meets the criteria for being 35 feet from the primary dwelling. So, while it does have that recordation, there really is no feasible way to have an area on that property for, uh, one large animal. So, everything else, uh, in terms of the requirements for an accessory building are met. The property, or the building, as I indicated, has already been constructed, uh, the Planning Commission voted 3-2 to approve it, uh, the, the opposition votes were based upon the fact that, that the, the structure itself is, uh, looks like, uh, it looks like a little house, and it looks like it could be easily converted into a livable quarters. Um, and had it come to them prior to construction, the use itself may have been approved, but the way it was constructed would not have been allowed to be built that way. So, it was a 3-2 vote, split, but they did adopt that resolution for approval. The, and that decision was appealed by the City Council. So, with the appeal, there are three options that the City Council has before tonight. The first option is, you can uphold the- The first option is you can uphold the Planning Commission approval, and that only requires a roll call vote. The second option is you can overturn the Planning Commission action and but still approve the project with changes to it or added conditions. And then, the third option is to overturn the Planning Commission action and deny the Prior to the meeting this evening, you've received a handout regarding this item from our Animal Control Division, and what they are recommending is if the City Council chooses to approve the project, that these conditions that are highlighted in red in this handout be added to the project. And they're basically, just quickly, that the structure needs an annual inspection. The cats, it is a cattery, I didn't mention that, it's a cattery, have to maintain up-to-date rabies vaccines. The cats need to be spayed and neutered. There needs to be a way to heat and cool the structure. Health records onsite for review by Animal Control. The property owner is responsible for inspection fees, and that's $61 for each annual inspection. The structure is to only stay for animals and not be converted for habitable use by people. The structure has some glass doors on the inside. There was some concerns at the Planning Commission that this only furthered the idea that it ultimately could be turned into habitable use by humans, but the applicant indicated that in addition to the cattery, half of the structure is used for parrots, and then the third part is used for storage of feed and other materials. Another condition is from Animal Control is that there be no more than 10 cats. There would need to be a quarantine area to house new cats for a period of at least 10 days before introducing them into the general cat population. So, again, the recommendation from Animal Control is that if the City Council chooses to approve the project, that these conditions be added. The applicant is in the audience, and with that, I'll conclude my presentation and answer any questions.
Counsel, have any questions? Staff, I'll start with Kevin.
I'm kind of confused by the packet that we got, and maybe the applicant will explain it, but I guess I'm just confused by this a little bit.
We received that from the city clerk? This is all the...
That is going to be part of public comments.
Okay, all right. Good. She'll explain it. No questions.
Craig?
Yeah, Steve. On your condition number five, I felt that the Planning Commission addressed that concern with no occupancy.
Okay.
On page two, on the Resolution 5.
Uh huh.
Knowing that was a concern of the Planning Commission. That condition suffices. If, with these notes that you've just given us from Animal Control, they were not present... They had no comments at planning about this? This is coming after the fact?
They had no comments at planning. We didn't seek input from them.
Okay.
We're to go to Planning Commission because, as I indicated, it's a code compliance case, and the building's already there.
Right. So, I mean, by them adding this one statement, "Structures is only to stay for animals, not be habitable," you've already addressed that in your condition number five.
Correct.
Did you have a chance to review these with the applicant?
They were provided a copy. We did not review them specifically with the applicant.
Okay.
Counselman Newton, I can add that when, as Steve added, this is a co-compliance case. When the word, when it came back as a cattery, then that's when Animal Control engaged in the conversation. The code's pretty strict, about no more than 10 cats per property as the code, but when we deal with a cattery or a submittal of a project, there may be a request in a cattery, then we look at it just as we would do a kennel, and these were the recommendations that were provided by Animal Control.
Okay. So, that's where I'm a little confused, Brian, is that... My concern was that it was a split planning vote, 3-2, and did not have all the information that I felt, but it was more of a, you know, a permit-type, you know, construction without permits type of thing. When it went to planning, it was known at that time, it was going to be for cats and birds. Should not this have been triggered at that time? When it went to the Planning Commission?
If it went to the Planning Commission and it was related to a cattery, and for birds, Animal Control should have been engaged in that conversation.
Okay.
The problem was, is I think, as Steve said, is that it was really a co-compliance case. I think the cattery came up after that process and was then submitted. So, that's when we engaged in the conversation, once we were notified that this was a possible cattery, then we engaged in the conversation.
Okay. Thank you. That's all for now, Mayor. Thank you.
Robin? Berwin? This is a public appeal hearing, so open the appeal hearing, and we have comments by the applicant. Okay? Do you want to come up, please?
First of all, I would like to apologize to the City Council, to the City Planning Commission, and moreover, to all the residents of Norco. When the situation happened, that's why I gave you the packet you have. I just had, I've just recently had open-heart surgery, and it failed the first time, and it's failing now. When this happened, I hired a contractor. I had a 60-day rent-back on the house in Corona, which is one of the big houses that sits above the daycare center right there on Hidden Valley. And the people that bought it agreed to the 60-day rent-back. Well, it seems that the lady that lived in the house that I have now on Sedona, Nancy Stahl, had two big rooms built on the house and some other things, and she had permits on them. So, while I was still well enough, I kept coming down to see Kathy Pope, and it took me about two years to find this house. As a matter of fact, I'd even already put a $500 deposit on another house, and Alma Robles was nice enough to come and find me because it had a huge yard, and I thought, oh, this will be great. And she said, "You can't build anything in this house." It was on El Paso. I said, "But I already put a deposit on the appraisal." She says, "No." She says, "It's large animal keeping. It had a huge yard." And I said, "Okay, then I don't, I don't want to take up large animal space. I don't have any large animals." So, I lost my $500 deposit, and I continued to look. Well, during that time, I was getting sicker and sicker, and I knew I was. And the people that had agreed to buy my house in Corona sold their house and moved into an apartment. They knew we had a condition that until I found a house, they didn't get my house. But anyway, then they started threatening to sue me, which they did hire an attorney. So, now, I'm on the 60-day rent-back. The doctors are telling me I have to have surgery or I'm going to die. And I hired a contractor. I gave a friend $3,000 to hire a contractor. They gave the contractor $3,000. Next thing I know, I'm in the hospital, and a friend comes and says, "We have a problem. The contractor's gone." I said, "What do you mean, the contractor's gone?" Nancy Stahl that was living in the house, meanwhile, her, the house she was buying in Huntington Beach flooded out. So, I come down, I got out of the hospital. I tried to find another contractor. I came in and talked to Kathy Pope again, and Kathy Pope...
Go ahead.
Kathy Pope told me, she pulled the plans, and she said, "These two big rooms in this house had been permitted, but the permits weren't finalized." I said, "The permits aren't finalized?" And I said, "I just gave the bank a full offer on this house. It was foreclosure." So, we had to go to square one. She had to come down here and apply to get the permits finalized. So, we had to wait for the city inspector to come out there. So, he finally got out there. He noticed a stair that I am told now shouldn't have been there to begin with, built onto one of these rooms, but he wanted it wider. Well, it took more time to make it wider. Meanwhile, my 60 days, and I stood to lose little over $170,000, which I was going to put on this house, was rapidly depleting. So, I end up back in the hospital again. A friend of mine says, "I have another contractor." He said, "He'll do the job." I gave her the money. I said, "Make sure he pulls the permits. Make sure he does anything." Okay. I get out of the hospital, left with about, oh, three weeks, four weeks, and I finally, when I get to the Sedona house, Nancy Stahl, the owner, still living in the house. I get into the back of the house, and I look, and this shed is almost completely finished. It's like three-quarters done. And I looked at him, and I said, "Oh, this looks..." It's because I told him it had to look like the house. That's the impression I got from Kathy Pope. It had to be the same color, the same... So, those were sort of the instructions that I gave them. And anyway, he said, "Well..." I said, "You got the permits and everything?" He said, "No." He says, "I have another job." He said, "I'm doing this as a favor because I know you're in a bind." He said, "We'll get the permits after we do this." And I thought, but I wasn't going to tell him to stop because he was three-quarters done, and I stood to lose $170,000. And it isn't like I hadn't made several attempts. I'd already lost $500 on El Paso, so I told him, "Look, just finish." He said, "I've got a small job. Soon as I finish, we'll go down. Yes, you'll have to pay fines." But I said, "Okay." He built it all to the specifications. I had another fellow check it out, a contractor. He's here. It was all built to the Norco specifications. Everything was fine. And while the contractor that built it was on his other job, he had a heart attack, fell off the building, and died. His wife immediately moved to Florida. So, now, I'm left with no site plan, a building that's basically complete, and I had to move. I moved out on the 59th day. It took numerous friends and people to move me. I hired Merit Management. I've got Lisa Merit here to do work on it. I hired the contractor. I got a site plan. I came down and saw Alma, and I said, "What do I need to do to make this right?" Now, my problem is, I guess part of the problem was, I thought Mr. Newton had, Counselman Newton, had some questions. There is two doors on this shed, a front one and a back one. And the officer, I think his name was Sparks from Animal Control, said to me, he said, "Why do you have two doors? The back door goes into a $6,000 chain-link run. The animals cannot get out anywhere. All my animals are fixed." The reason there are two doors on this building, though, is I had the windows, I asked for the windows to be made small, which really eliminates people crawling into them. The problem is, these birds are my family, so are these animals, but I've had the birds 45 years. It was just on the news the other night, people are stealing these birds. They're worth about $3,000 apiece, and I've got three of them sitting in there. So, those doors stay locked. The windows really aren't big enough. They might be big enough for a child to crawl through, but they're not really big enough for an adult to get through. There is, like I say, a long chain-link run where they can go out and run and then come back in. The birds, however, I have to have a middle area because that's why you've got the pictures there. The birds will kill the cats. And the birds already took out one of my cats. So, all my cats are vaccinated. They all go down to Dr. Bart on Grand Avenue. I've done everything I can. I even had the contractor that's here tonight come out and cut holes in the building, in the shed, in the wall, in the wall areas, the ceiling and everything, so that when an inspector came out, he could see the wiring, he could see the footing, he could see everything he needed to see without having him have to come back when it was cut out. So, I've done everything I can do, and I apologize to everyone for this. I'm very sorry it happened, and it has been very expensive. And I understand I'm not the only one that this contractor, the first contractor, took off on. There's another fellow that lives over on River, and he took him for $6,000 and didn't do the job. And when I called the Sheriff's Department and I spoke with them, of course, mine was only $3,000, they said, "Well, it's really not a criminal thing. It's more of a civil thing, and you'll have to go to court." I'm too sick to go to court. I'm on oxygen most of the time. So, the $3,000 is gone. The $500 is gone. When they asked me at the Planning Commission, Mr. Leonard, Bob Leonard, "Well, did you do that?" I only have one question. "Did you build that house without a permit knowingly?" Yes and no. Yes, I tried to get a permit. Yes, I started all the process. I didn't knowingly do it, but when I got out of the hospital, finally got to the house where the resident was still there, and the inspector hadn't even been back from the city to inspect the stair he wanted to make wider, and I look in the backyard, and this thing's three-quarters done. I've got less than about a week and a half to move, or I lose $170,000. I said, "Do it." So, yes, I knowingly had it done without a permit. Did I intentionally do it? No. Did I plan on permitting it? Yes. Did I make attempts to permit it? Yes. Am I willing to do anything I need to do to permit it now? Yes. I don't know what else to say. I mean, I apologize to everyone, but it was just a set of unfortunate circumstances all the way around. And right after I moved in, well, actually, just even about a month ago, I was getting ready to come down again. I'd found another contractor, gentleman that's here, and he'd worked out a site plan, and we had talked to Alma. And about that time, I had a tenant in Corona, and you've probably got the pictures there. They're in the packet. I get a call, I guess I've been out of the hospital three or four days. My chest had just been cracked open. It was all wired shut. And it's Corona, the City of Corona, the inspectors threatening to fine me $500 a day for the condition that the tenant left the house in. I had to hire a driver. I couldn't drive. I went over there. I took one look at the house. I got estimates. They wanted over $150,000 to fix the house. And the tenant was threatening to burn the house down and to burn my house here down. So, I wasn't very happy about it. He was evicted. The case is gone to court. He didn't show up in court, so I don't know where this case is going with him. The house has been sold in Corona, so it's gone. So, then, he got mad, and he came down and turned me in here, which was really not a big thing because he beat me, turning me in, just by, I would have already been here to do this if I hadn't had to go over there and deal with that. So, that's the situation. I do have Lisa Merit from Merit Management or Merit Engineering here, and I do have the contractor here that did the site plan for it. And Alma's been out to see it. Animal Control's been out there twice to see it. It meets all Norco specifications. He did do that. The contractor that did it did do that. He did a nice job. But I was told when I talked... But I was told, when I talked to Kathy Pope, and I was in here numerous times, I wanted to make sure all the permits, everything was done on it. And she says, "Now, make sure, you know, it has to be... It has to look like the front house. It has to be the same color. It should be the same color, the same..." So, I just told the contractor, "Make it look like the... Make the shed look as much like the front house as you can." And he did not put a tile roof on it. It's got the other kind of roofing on it. But it's really... I'm right off of Hidden Valley. It's really noisy. And that was one of my greatest fears when I moved to Norco. These birds would wake God up. And I thought, "Where am I going to move? What neighborhood am I going to move to where if these birds start to make noise, the neighbors aren't going to have a fit?" Well, fortunately, there's so much noise on Hidden Valley that the birds don't seem to make any noise, which is a blessing, I guess. But I am asking for your leniency, and I hope you will give it to me. I'd like to just permit it and get on with this. And I understand, I did call Animal Control in between my hospital visits, and I asked if the house that I was buying on Sedona was large animal-keeping land because I didn't want to lose another $500 appraisal. And they said, "No, it was not." So, based on that, I agreed to buy the house. I had to wait during my 60-day time that was clicking down for them to get the permits all signed off that she should have had signed off. Everything was done. It was just never finalized.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Okay. If you want to talk... If you need to talk to...
We'll go through the process to see if any other cards.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any cards?
I did have a couple of questions for...
Let me hear the cards, and then we'll...
Okay.
I'm following the little outline I have here, so...
Patricia Whitaker.
Good evening, Ms. Whitaker.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Mayor, Council. My name is Pat Whitaker. I live at 143 Sedona Lane, just across the street from the property in question. And I wanted to share with you that I have looked at the shed, and it's gorgeous. I think that it's an attribute to the community. It's not an attraction in any way, and the owner has been an excellent neighbor to all of us. I would suggest that I did attend the Planning Commission meeting, and it dismayed me in a sense when there's a presumption that residents are going to build nice sheds and nice barns and nice accessory buildings and that they may intend to use those for occupancy. Most of us are not doing that, and if there were that kind of action, we certainly have code enforcement and police actions to do that. I'm very proud to see this accessory building. We have beautiful barns and other buildings. So, I'm hoping you'll support this applicant. It is a beautiful building and a great attribute for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker.
Lisa Merit.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman, and woman, and staff. Jackie obviously is truly remorseful for something that has been done pretty much beyond her control. She does have her health issues. She cannot be in the house with the birds and with the cats. They are her family. She has no children. She has no family left. These are her family members. Unfortunately, she can't have them living in her house. She did make it look like the larger house because that's what she was told would need to be done, and never thinking that City Council or Planning Commission, anybody, would not want that or not like that. So, it was surprising at Planning Commission for that to become a very large issue. Number two, I wanted to just real quickly approach the subject of the cattery. This is not a cattery. There's been an application for a cattery. She does not have the amount of cats that would be required for a cattery. She has three birds. She has her cats. She's had all these for a very long time. She doesn't intend to use this for anything other than housing for her animals. It meets all the codes. It meets everything that's in required... That's been required for accessory structures. She does have the two doors. It's... If you can tell in any of the pictures that you've received, it's almost like this. It's shaped in a U, just like this podium is. This side here has cats. This side here has birds. She has a sliding glass door here, and she has a sliding glass door here. She needs to separate these two. She can't have the cats mingling with the birds. The birds will kill the cats. Birds are huge. So, anyways, I just wanted to clarify the fact that this has never been brought up, that it's a cattery. It's very surprising to me today that this is being brought up. There's all these conditions regarding vaccinations. I've had cats. I've never had anybody come and say, "Your cat needs to be vaccinated." You know, obviously, my animals are vaccinated, and her animals are vaccinated, but for it to be a condition of her accessory structure is just something we had not heard of. We request that this application be approved, as it was through the Planning Commission. And if you have any questions, please ask me. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Garcia.
Good evening, Mr. Garcia.
Mayor, City Council, and staff, my name is George Garcia. I am a general contractor in the state of California. I was asked to assist Ms. Lewis with her issues on that structure, on that shed. So, I came in and drafted up the site plan that you may have in front of you and provided the structural engineer plans for that. So, if there's any questions on that behalf, any concerns, I can be asked those questions.
We'll wait until the rest of the cards. Mine... You're going to be here, right?
Yes.
Okay. We'll hear the rest of them, and then we'll...
Just to let you know, the structure is the type pipe framing. It does meet the conditions for California code. I understand the... I actually work for a different municipality, and I'm just here to provide assistance to Ms. Lewis. The structure itself appears to be in a great condition. It looks more like an elaborate house, little house, than it does a shed, but it is a shed. My inspection revealed that it's been utilized for her storage of her three birds, and at the time, I saw maybe three cats when I was out there to inspect. If there's any questions, feel free to give me a call.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that's all the cards on this item.
All right. Bring that back. Mr. Newton, you had some questions of the applicant or the contractor? Ms. Lewis?
I actually start with the contractor first.
Okay, Mr. Garcia. I'm sorry.
Yeah, just... They're very simple. So, now you have become the contractor of record to assist Mrs. Lewis on this project.
I was called in to give Ms. Lewis some advice. I'm not the general contractor or was the general contractor previously on this project, again, because I actually work for another municipality, and I help other community and residents in these type of conditions. I work with code enforcement, the Building Safety Department, and the Planning Department to put a remedy to conditions like this. I actually... My... The agency that I work for, we step in. Code enforcement steps out. I sit down with planning, building safety again, and put up a plan to... Put a solution to the project. If we deem necessary that the building has to be demoed, I would make that call. We would make that call. In this condition, the... From what's visible to me, the structure looks in good condition. It's within the setbacks.
Will you be assisting Ms. Lewis with dealing with our building inspector at all?
I have tried to do that initially in the city that I work for. I actually make the initial contact with the Building Department to do... Get a special inspection. We walk it to put that remedy together. I have not been hired as the general contractor to continue with this. If Ms. Lewis decides to do that, I can. I'm here on my own free will. She was in concern. She has some health issues. I'm a friend of Pat Whitaker who just spoke a few minutes ago. We were colleagues at one point, and I'm here to help. I'm here to assist. If I can, I will.
But no relationship today, a business relationship with this project?
There's no business relationship. I'm providing her some... Giving her direction on my side. If she decides to want to continue with my service, we'll talk with that.
Thank you.
Discuss that with her. Any other questions?
Well, Mr. Garcia, is that... Merwin, you have any questions?
No. I'm sorry. I have some...
Okay. I'm just making sure. Mr....
I do, too, so...
I have some ear damage and a little bit of hard of hearing, so please bear with me.
Okay. Well, we're all hard-headed up here anyway, so... Thank you, Mr. Garcia. All right.
Can I say something off the record?
There is no off the record, but...
Okay. I'm sorry. On a separate subject, this is... I don't live in Norco. I know some people that have lived in Norco, but I just... I admire the council, the staff, the community, how they dress. They're veterans. Some of the veterans are gone here. I might be talking to some veterans here. So, I admire how you acknowledge the veterans, and it means something to me. I am a veteran.
Ooh, thank you for your service, sir. Mr. Newton, you have some more questions, Ms. Lewis?
Just for...
Ms. Lewis? If we can. Newton?
Good evening.
Hi.
Part of my concerns, I don't want you to think this was, you know, being vindictive or anything like that. I had no concerns about your doors. My concerns were that there was a split vote from the Planning Commission.
Yes, sir.
And that... In one, we all know, I mean, there was no permits at the time.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it was a code enforcement action. So, it all kind of compounds along with your story, okay? And so, I don't have any real heartburn with your project at all, but just I have a couple of questions on, if you would answer for me, that... And I'm not sure exactly where you are in the process with your permitting today, okay? But as Mr. Garcia said, at some point, our building inspector would have to come out and look at the construction of your building. And like you had mentioned, you opened up some drywall and things like that. So, I would classify that as, say, like destructive inspection in a way? If you know what I mean, that you're going to have to expose the footing or expose what's behind the drywall, which it sounds like you already have. Is that...
It was when I retained Mr. Garcia. I paid Mr. Garcia as a contractor. He brought a worker out, and he said that we should open up spaces...
Okay.
...for your inspector. So, I paid $600 to have about four holes cut in there so your inspectors could come in and see them.
Okay. And it... Just so that you're aware that it'll be...
I wouldn't have done it on my own. I only did it on his...
Right. Yeah. But there may be other requirements by the inspector when he gets out there?
Oh, I understand.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure...
No, I have no problem with that. I understand that.
Right. I don't have any concerns with the building and any impact on...
I have no impact on any of my neighbors. It doesn't block anyone's view.
Right. Was going to be on animal keeping in general, so...
And it really, I mean, I was sort of surprised. I used to work up in south central Los Angeles, and I mean, if you want to take something and make it a house or live in it, I can show you some beautiful cardboard boxes up there that they... And Orange County's got tarps and Tarp City all along the... I mean, this, I even intentionally, right before I left instructions and I had to go in, I knew I was too sick to come down and sort of monitor the whole thing. But I left instructions that I wanted lots of windows, and I wanted them small and not so that people really couldn't fit through. And the windows, they are small windows. I mean, probably a five-year-old or 10-year-old could crawl through them if you knocked out the screen and you knocked out the extra wire I've got around there to protect them in case the cats would push them out. But even then, other than two or three of the windows, the rest of them would go out into the back and close chain link run anyway. And so, there's really no impact. And as far as my birds go, healthy birds create a lot of feather dust, and these guys are very healthy. So... But they haven't been noisy. They haven't bothered the neighbors. And I was sort of surprised. I had no doubts that this tenant I evicted was going to come and do this.
Ms. Lewis, I hate to cut up. I got to get my other council members. Have them have a specific question?
Yeah, let me... I'm sorry. Let me ask just one more question. You were given a copy of this by Mr. King?
No, I was not.
These conditions, Steve, were not given to the applicant?
No. I never received them.
Mayor, I think it would... The applicant ought to have at least a few minutes to look at these...
I agree with that.
Is there anything that jumps out at you that you would not agree with, or...
I don't have my glasses for mine, so I can't read them. If you can read them to me. The fact that my cats... I'm a state-licensed nurse, so my cats, I give them most of their vaccinations. If there's anything wrong with them, and I have a vet, Dr. Bart, that's well-known over here on Grand Avenue. I've been going to him for probably 15... He wasn't on Grand Avenue always, but I've been going to him for 15 or 20 years.
Can I interrupt you just real quick?
Uh-huh.
If I may, because of time?
Sure.
If there's anything that really jumps out, but I'm...
It's not a cattery. There's no breeding of animals. Everything's spayed and altered.
Okay. Thank you, Sandy. I feel it is on this that this is too little, too late, and this shouldn't be presented as evidence in this hearing. If this was going to be presented, it should have been presented at the Planning Commission and not tonight.
Yep.
That's not me.
The... Brian, while you're talking about this cattery, and Steve, unless you know, what's the definition of a cattery?
I don't know.
Brian?
When you're going to house animals in a specific thing, and this particular CUP requests a accessory building use permit to allow for the sheltering of animals and as a storage shed. So, there's 325, 24 square feet. It is for the sheltering of an animal. By definition, that is a cattery. We're not arguing... In fact, actually, my officers have said she does a great job with the animals.
I'm not... I'm just trying to get the definition and not the character.
They're not free-roaming. They're housed in a specific area. We would look at this as a cattery.
So, there's no number, is what I'm getting at?
The code requires no more than 10.
Okay. But there... Is there a minimum to define something as a cattery?
No more than 10 unless you have a cattery permit.
Okay. I'm going by code, please. Please.
By your code.
Your... The code definition of a cattery as our municipal code?
We look at this as a housing of animals specific. Then that defines to us a cattery. You cannot have 10, more than 10 cats on your property per code. That's how we view this. Just...
So, this is an interpretation?
And if you have more than four dogs on a property, you'd be looked at as a kitten... And if you have more than four dogs on a property, you'd be looked at as a kennel.
Correct.
We look at it the same way.
So this is interpretation?
If these were free roaming cats, we wouldn't even be having this discussion, but they're housed in a cattery.
Okay, and that's the only reason that the definition was, it was put in here? Okay, I'm just trying to clarify the definition before we get further on this, okay?
By the way, we would look at that whether there was two cats or 10 cats.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, was the definition of it. Okay, did you have any more? Kevin, did you have any more, Mr. Newton? Kevin, do you have any?
Mr. Mayor Hoffman?
Hang on, let me, let me see if my other questions, okay? Because I'm trying to get this done, ten of them.
So she's never seen this? I'm just going to ask you some questions, maybe we can get this finished. The structure is to be inspected annually at a minimum, every year. Do you agree to that?
Sure.
All cats shall maintain up-to-date rabies vaccine. Do they do rabies?
Generally, you don't rabies cats. Cats, especially these cats are enclosed.
All cats are to be spayed and neutered?
They all are.
Okay, a way to heat and cool the structure, portable is okay?
I do.
All cats' health records on site and on file for review by Norco Animal Control Services?
They are.
The property owner will be responsible for inspection fee every year? It's $61 per year?
I will. I don't think that's fair, but I will.
Just table that one for a second. The structure is the only, is to only stay for animals not habitable by people. Let me stress something.
Yes.
It is almost impossible to do code enforcement when people are living in a house in the back. Sometimes it takes years. Sometimes you have councils that throw out every single code enforcement thing you have. So part of what we have to be careful of is that the person down the road doesn't move people into the house. So that's why we have a little bit of worry about that. But I'm going to take your word for it. The glass doors is a good idea for the cats and pairs to be separated from each other?
They're, they're cat, they're, it's like a regular, it's small, but it's...
I mean, you're good with it.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Said no more than 10 cats?
There's only six in there.
You're never going to have no more than 10 cats. Quarantine area needs to be created to house the new cats for a period of at least 10 days before introducing them to the cattery.
I have no new cats. I have no intentions of getting any, but if I were to get one, sure, I have a quarantine, an area I could call a quarantine.
And the annual inspection fee of $61 is required. So the two that we pulled away were rabies? Now what's the deal, Brian, what's the deal with rabies?
I'm not sure why the officer recommended that, because you don't vaccinate rabies for cats.
Okay, all right, so we're just going to take that one for me. I don't know what you guys are going to do. And then what was the other one we pulled?
You did the fee.
The fee, what's with the fee, Brian? The annual inspection fee? Is this a...
That's common when we do inspections for this type of use, that we have an inspection fee. That covers the officer's cost for that inspection.
So given that, given the...
My answer to that, though, I'm going to challenge that one. If I had those six cats in my house, would you still be charging me an inspection fee?
No.
Unfortunately, you built a building specifically for the cats, and so it's now...
I built it for the cats and the birds.
And the birds, I get it, I get it. But my point is, is that the inspection fee, 61, because right now, you've agreed to everything, but the one thing we've thrown out, we have, for me, and again, I'm only one vote. You've got one last thing to do. $61 a year you would pay for them to come in and inspect your, your cattery. Do you have a problem with that?
Yes, but I will do it.
Okay, that's all I have.
I think, put it this way, I think it's unfair, but, and I didn't have to go through this in Corona or another city, but yes, if that's what Norco is going to require, I understood Norco was an animal-friendly city. I've got neighbors that have four, five dogs, six dogs, one neighbor has, and I'm sure that there's no one. I never see animal control there.
I'm going to...
Ms. Lewis, hang on, we want to get this thing done.
Yeah, thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Kremmer, do you have anything?
No.
Anything, any questions for this applicant, or any, Berwin?
I just got one, that you hired a contractor to finish this and get you up to date on everything? Did I understand that correctly?
Would you repeat that, please?
I don't want you to tell that you had two contractors and they left. I want to know, do you have a contractor right now that...
Yes, sir, I paid Mr. Garcia.
Okay, but he said he wasn't a contractor to work on this.
He is a contractor, and he's the one that did the site plan.
He said he was advising you. I'm asking you, do you have a contractor that's going to finish?
Yes, I have a...
That's going to complete the building?
Yes, I have a contractor.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
I will assist her.
But you have a licensed contractor that will complete your construction?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, and then I'm going to go back on this inspection fee because I want to make sure that she understands that. We're doing two things. You got from this CUP thing that we've done here, an annual inspection fee of $61. Now, the inspection fee, and this comes back to you, Steve, there's no other inspection fee for the property owner regarding this house. If you had to have code enforcement go out and inspect this, what would be her cost? If, there's no additional cost for that, is there?
There will not be required follow-up inspection by code enforcement once she's cleaned up.
Okay, that's, I'm just checking to make sure that there's no two fees in this thing, just the one, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And then I guess the final question is, is Ms. Lewis, and you understand, and it's too bad that somebody gets this to you, you understand all these conditions that would be placed on you, correct? Whether you agree with it or not, we're just trying to make sure, okay?
Yes, yes, Mayor, I understand the conditions that are placed on me.
Okay.
As far as the rabies vaccinations...
Al, I don't understand. I can see feline distemper, but ours...
Yeah, no, I already, they already get those injections. And then, like I say, they're not out. I've had hundreds of cats. As you see in, in your animal control report, the person that turned me in, the tenant that I evicted, said that I had 50 to 60 cats. So when animal control came to my front door unannounced, I invited them in. Not only did I invite them in, I insisted they check every room in my house, including the closets. And they did not find 50 to 60 cats. I did, however, tell them that I do have 150 cats that have been in animals, Great Danes. All my animals through my whole life have been cremated. And when they get cremated, when they die, they come back in little plastic bags. I put their picture on the bag, I put the bag in a satin pillow, and it's already, I've already done my will. The instructions are that the pillows go with me.
That's admirable. All right, any other questions of the applicant?
Excuse me, Mayor, I just wanted to ask, I did receive a card, another speaker card. I know the public comments have been closed, but I wanted to make aware of that if you're willing to hear.
I don't know if it's going to make any difference at this point. No, we've already closed that part of it. So Greg, you initially pulled us for appeal with...
Yeah, I think, thank you so much for your time and, and your explanations.
Thank you.
Your explanations, believe it or not...
I don't know what you're, I, all I was going to say earlier was that I have had a lot of cats through the years, and I used to do rescue. And generally, when you talk about, like in Riverside or other cities, when you talk about a cattery, yes, you're talking about multiples. We're talking maybe 10, 15, 20, 25, 30. But we're not talking six to nine cats, really.
Thank you. But I wanted to thank you, and believe it or not, you did clarify my questions and some of the reasonings for the appeal. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Rob.
Mayor Protem, you can interrupt me, absolutely.
Sorry. Do we have a definition of cattery from an official source? Or are we just going to leave that floating out there?
We, I don't think that there's a code definition of cattery, but by the same token, all we're doing is, all that really means in this context is a place where cats are housed, and we, and the maximum is 10 by code. So I mean, there, none of these are specific rules related to a cattery. I mean, you can strike the word cattery, and it doesn't have any effect.
And what drove this was the conditional use permit for a cat shelter?
Yeah, yeah, so if you can call it a, yeah, that's, because that's, that was the purpose in the CUP.
Accessory building, we wouldn't have placed cats, not what...
But whether the word cattery is used in any condition or not is irrelevant to what you're going to do or not do. That it's just, there are a maximum of 10 cats, and they're going to be housed in this facility. You call out a cat shelter, a cat and bird shelter, a cattery, a birdery, or anything you want.
I guess my question, my question becomes, does the term cattery being used automatically trigger animal control being involved?
No. What triggered it was the conditional use permit calling it a cat shelter. Then we look at that shelter to make sure that the animals are maintained and protected and have a healthy environment, and that's where these conditions would come into play. And by the way, the officers have said that Mrs. Lewis really takes good care of her animals, and the facility is immaculate. We just put these conditions is because it's a CUP process. And anytime that there's a CUP process where a sheltering of animals comes into play, then animal control is usually brought into that conversation.
So the definition...
This process is, actually, it's not a CUP.
Yeah, I was going to ask, I thought it was an accessory building.
An accessory building use permit. It's an accessory building use permit.
I'm wondering why a CUP is even being brought up.
It's not, because Mr. Petrie misstated what it was, that's the answer. It is, as it says in the agenda...
Accessory building, correct?
It's an accessory building use permit.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion. And this would be, if I understand this correct, this would just be a roll call vote to uphold the planning commission approval, which should only require a roll call vote, and with, with these conditions, scratch the accessory, cattery, whatever terminology, and the $61 fee.
Are you requiring?
Question.
Are you, are you... Are you just eliminating the fee?
Yeah, I think the applicant answered all the questions, agreed to these conditions.
Okay, so you need to add those conditions to the permit?
Yeah, but I don't think, like you just said, John, it's not...
It's an accessory building.
It's an accessory building, and I don't believe this inspection fee is required.
So what's, what's left on this?
So...
Actually, now let me ask you a question, if, if you're going to do that. So the structure doesn't need to be inspected annually? No, I'm asking him, not you. So, okay, so you'd strike that, the cat, then the rabies vaccine, strike that one?
This doesn't say things are rabies vaccine.
And, and no annual inspection fee, otherwise the rest of it stays?
You know, John, I'm going to go back to when I first said this. I think this is too little, too late. This should have been presented at the planning commission...
That's why I was asking what your motion was.
Yeah, let's just go back to that. It should have been at the planning commission level and not at this level. So I think I would just draw an X through this whole...
So your motion is, so your motion then is simply to uphold the planning commission?
The planning commission approval.
With no additional conditions or anything else?
No. Or yes? No more conditions.
So that's your motion now, okay? Uphold it, do I have a second on that?
I'll say it.
Second on it. Before, on discussion, Cheryl, can we add the additional materials that we received along with, I received a, another letter from a citizen on this matter?
Yeah, they are part of the record.
Well, okay, so I just want to make them part of the record, okay? And with that, entertain a roll call vote.
Okay, please vote. That motion carries unanimously.
All right. All right, moving on to item nine, City Council, City Manager, Staff Communications. Start with Kevin. I think Greg. How about our city attorney? Does he have any comments, since he likes to speak tonight?
Oh, it was just so much fun, I can't describe it.
Absolutely. Cheryl? Matt? Chad? Again, good, thank you for the community cleanup. Steven? Brian?
Horse Week rodeo this weekend.
Horse Week rodeo this weekend, starts Friday, yes. Gina? Thank you. Sergeant Parker, anything? Smiling B, your partner left you. He didn't bring his cutout either, what's up with that? Okay.
Brian, I will be bringing back a definition of cattery for the next meeting.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Berwin? Robin? City manager?
No.
And me, meeting's adjourned.